... by our city clerk Cathy Valdez.
The records show a flag that all members are present.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. Oh, I forgot the Pledge of Allegiance. I skipped right over that. Okay, so if you'll all join us and rise, we'll have a Pledge of Allegiance that's going to be led by Council Member Rigby.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to remind everybody that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow the public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. Attendees should remain seated during the meeting, and persons needing to stand are requested to step outside the city council chambers where the video and audio of the meeting are playing. This is also listed on our agenda cover sheet. And students that are here, if you're wishing to receive a credit for attending this evening's meeting, you must stay for a minimum of an hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. So when you're ready to leave, you can ask one of the sheriff deputies or a staff member in the back of the room to sign your paper. And to speak for three minutes on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on and give it to the clerk secretary right down here. Speaker slips are available just outside the council chambers. And with that, oral communication. Don't do that now, or can I do it?
Yeah, I'll do it now, okay.
So with that, I'm going to go with the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, and actually, we have, I have one presentation item this evening, and it's a proclamation declaring Wednesday, February 27th, Dr. Bronner's Magic Soap's Day in the City of Vista. So if COO Michael Milam and CFO Tweedy Bronner will join me at the podium, and our city council also, if you all come down there with me. Okay, so I'm going to give this to you as our proclamation, and I'm going to read it. It states, "Whereas Dr. Bronner's Magic Soap has committed to continuing their existing partnership in support of the City of Vista's Moonlight Presents 2019 series. Dr. Bronner's Magic Soap's $100,000 title sponsorship will help support the City of Vista's cultural arts program and its Moonlight Presents programming throughout the year. This generous commitment allows the Moonlight Presents series to provide live entertainment throughout the year to residents and visitors. The partnership between the City of Vista and Dr. Bronner's will continue to enhance the quality of life in Vista by increasing access to high-quality live performances. Dr. Bronner's partnership demonstrates both their appreciation for the arts and their dedication to supporting local programs such as the Moonlight Amphitheater." So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby express their appreciation to Dr. Bronner's Magic Soaps for the generous support of the Moonlight Presents 2019 series, and proclaim tomorrow, Wednesday, February 27th, 2019, as Dr. Bronner's Magic Soap's Day in the City of Vista. So congratulations to them, and thank you so much.
I see a check. I just see this little check here. So I think we should get this in our picture, don't you? Can we all get together and push in? Oh, okay. I can look at you, or I can look at that. Congratulations, Steve. Do you want to say anything? I asked if they wanted to say anything, and they said, no, they were glad to support us. We appreciate them. Thank you so much.
We're very, very appreciative of them. So with that, we move on to our consent calendar, and the following recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar, and we have eight consent items this evening, and so I don't see anything from the public. Okay, and I see Council Member Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I would second that, but I'd like to poll C8.
You'd like to what?
I'd like to poll item C8.
Oh, item C8, okay, got it. Okay, with that, we can vote on the balance, and then we'll do that. So everybody, please cast your votes for the balance of the consent calendar. Okay, that passes unanimously, and so we're going to pull item C8, Central Vista Business Improvement District, intent to levy, and it looks like Kevin Hamm, our Director of Economic Development's going to take that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Would you like a presentation on this item?
Would you like a presentation?
I would, but I just wanted to begin by saying, I know there's some folks who came to speak about this issue tonight, and if they haven't already pulled a card, I'd like to hear from them on this issue. This is a business improvement district that we organized near 20 years ago to levy a tax on business owners in the central downtown area, and we're going through some reorganization, rethinking of how we're going to spend that tax, and I just want to make sure that we have buy-in from the business community that's paying that tax since it was a voluntary, you know, effort to approve the bid improvement district in the first place. And I wanted us to have a conversation about whether or not it's right to continue to levy the funds in the face of our changing use of the funds. I thought it was fair to at least have that conversation.
And I'd like to add, there is nobody that pulled a speaker slip for this item, or frankly, for D1, which is the next item.
Okay. Love to hear from folks. If they have something to add, they could pull a speaker slip and turn it in, but I'd like to hear your presentation.
Brief presentation this evening. This item was scheduled, so we have the intent to levy. The Central Vista Business Improvement District Advisory Board has approved their annual report, which sets the boundaries, the fees, and the programs for the Central Vista Business Improvement District. As you mentioned, this had been in place for several years. It was originally implemented in 1995. Since that point in time, we had a gap of about a three-year period in early 2000, where the Central Vista Business Improvement District was on hold for a few years. In 2002, we implemented it again, and since then, we have contracted with the Vista Village Business Association to implement the CVBID. But with this item, we scheduled this item with the recommendation of the CVBID Advisory Board that the boundaries, fees, and programs stay the same, and then we set a public hearing for, if the council approves this, for the next council meeting, the first meeting in March.
Seeing no speakers, I would make a motion that we approve item C8 and continue to discussion on this subject, or discussion item one.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, please, cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda are discussion items, and we have three discussion items this evening. The first one is D1, the Central Vista Business Improvement District, CVBID Administration and Implementation. And Economic Development Director Kevin Hamm is going to introduce this item.
Good evening again. With me is Jennifer Shinick. She's our Economic Development Specialist, and she'll be giving the presentation this evening.
In November 2018, council terminated the CVBID agreement with the VVBA, and city staff took on administration of the CVBID for the remainder of the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Staff is working with the CVBID Advisory Board to complete activities in the work plan. Historically, the funds for the CVBID work plan activities have been distributed to a single nonprofit, but for the 2019-2020 year, the CVBID Advisory Board and staff proposed the creation of a CVBID grant program to distribute funds. A full description of the program is attached to the council agenda. CVBID funds will be issued as grants to a variety of organizations through an application and review process. Grantees must meet the goals of the CVBID outlined in the annual report, which are generally to promote and market the area for the benefit of the businesses. City council will approve grants in June after the review and approval by the CVBID Advisory Board. Fifty percent of the grant will be paid upon the completion of an agreement with the city, and the remaining 50% once the activity reporting form is complete and approved by the CVBID Advisory Board. No administrative fees will be taken out of the CVBID assessment fees for Economic Development's administration of the program. Staff recommends that council adopt the resolution to establish the Central Vista Business Improvement Grant Program. This concludes the presentation. At this time, Mr. Hamm, as well as the CVBID Advisory Board Chair, Dave Lowen, and myself are available to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any speaker, you have no speaker? Okay, so then we'll go to Deputy Mayor Franklin.
You know, I made a motion to approve the levying of the bid fee because no one came forward to make any comment, and so I think for the moment, silence means consent, but as we are reimagining how we're using these funds, I want to make sure that we have a year from now, a robust public conversation with the payers of the bid fee about how we've used the money and how they want to see it used going forward, and whether or not we want to either A, eliminate the bid altogether, B, double or increase it in size, or C, maintain the status quo and continue to do what we've been doing. But I think those three options really deserve a robust conversation. The current lever of power requires a majority of the bid payers to come together and, you know, petition the city to eliminate the bid. It's a very high burden that is almost impossible, so if folks aren't happy with the funds that they're paying in, we may not be hearing about it. I just want to make sure when we lay a tax on people that, and it's for a specific item, I want to make sure that we have continued buy-in from the payers of that tax and that they're receiving something that they feel is of value for it.
Councilmember Contreras.
So I think this is a very interesting concept, to look at grants and micro grants. I like how there's two different levels. The thing that I really like about going this route, at least to try it out and see how it goes, is that we are able to economically, basically maximize every dollar of that, of the bid money that goes into this pool, right? Because we're not having to put some of it towards someone's salary or any other kind of external costs like that for just managing it. And it also provides the opportunity for us to have maybe different activities in the bid zone. I personally think that it's a, I'm really happy to see this in front of us because it does seem like, you know, it's been the same old, same old, and there's been a lot of ups and downs in the relationship and the way that the funds have been used, and this is perhaps a better way to standardize using those funds and really see what the impact is. You know, I would hope that it goes really well, but in the case that it doesn't, you know, we'll be able to review it again. And another thing is, you know, perhaps this will really bring in some more live entertainment, some music culturally, cultural arts. You know, culture is money. We see other cities that really have a strong economic engine because they are facilitating space for cultural arts. So I think that this is a really great opportunity for Vista to start seeing some more activities downtown. But again, if it doesn't work out, then, you know, we can reevaluate it at that point. But I'm just really happy to see a more innovative approach to utilizing these funds, because it's not a ton of money. So when you start putting some of this money into administrative costs, it really eats into the potential to really maximize every dollar. So I appreciate, you know, having this in front of us and with the CVBID board, you know, reviewed and came to this conclusion. So I think it's a really good thing.
Do you have a speaker? Cliff Kaiser wants, do you want to hear the speaker now in between?
Sure.
Okay, Cliff.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I apologize for being tardy, and I didn't hear the comments, but I did go to the two advisory board meetings this year, and you know the story of the VVBA and the bid. I won't go over that. But this is a dramatic change from how it's been done since its formation. And I would just encourage you, like I encouraged the advisory board, to let the fee-paying members know what's going on before you start spending their money again and changing the program. The cab or the advisory board felt that there wasn't enough time during this cycle to get that notification out, and I'm saying, take what money's left in this year's budget from the advisory, or from the bid, and use it to make that notification, get their input. And then if you have to make decisions because of, sorry. If you have to make decisions because of the deadlines through the fiscal year and stuff, make the decision to suspend the collection of fees for a year while you decide what's the right path to go. Thank you.
Okay, I have one other speaker here. Julie Lowen, first.
Time here to support the grants program, and to give you kind of an idea of some of the things that could happen. In the past, we've had a Winter Fest that Children's Paradise sponsored. We're willing to sponsor it again. We're willing to work hard to bring first five in. We're willing to work hard to maybe use a little bit of the grant and put some partners together so that we can not just have a Winter Fest that happens one day, but so that we can light up the downtown. You saw my beautiful building and what I did at Christmas. Did you see it at Valentine's Day? It's going to be even better for St. Patrick's Day coming. So there are a number of really cool things that are kind of brewing underneath the surface that really haven't kind of come up yet, that we can do. In the meantime, gives the CVBID some time to kind of organize themselves and make a determination the best way to use the funds and so that they represent the businesses. And I think it's a, it's an appropriate way to look at it. You're instantaneously starting to make Vista's downtown regional, a regional area. People are going to absolutely go crazy if all of the buildings are lit up. I was super excited because when pigs fly, lit up their building. And he says, yes, and we're going to be doing some more. And I've been talking with some of the other businesses down there. So just kind of give you an idea, there's a lot of excitement and energy behind what's happening downtown. We're really excited working behind the scenes with Kevin Hamm and with John Connolly, and we've got a lot of really good ideas coming. And so I think this is an excellent program to just kind of let things marinate. It also, to Karina Contreras's point, it brings in smaller, more excited, community-oriented people, and we can get some culture into that downtown area, get some new ideas. So it kind of opens it up. So I would tell you, I support it very highly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll, but Councilmember Rigby will hand the council members.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The previous item that we talked about, that the deputy mayor pulled off the consent calendar, C8, was the notification to set the date for the public hearing to have a discussion on whether or not we really are going to levy the fees, continue to levy the fees. I think this item is a little bit premature on this date. I would like to have seen it come in conjunction with the night that we have the public hearing to see if we really are going to do this. Anybody who's been following me for the last seven years knows that this whole issue brings me a little bit of heartburn. I've had so many people talk about the money that they pay into it versus the benefit that they get from it. And some of the issue is, some of the businesses that pay into it are so far outside of the actual historic downtown area, yet they're paying into it and they're getting no value of it whatsoever. Over the years, we have had different iterations of the board that manages and oversees the funding. The VVBA has just imploded. We are no longer working with the VVBA. I don't even know that they exist anymore. I'm not sure about that. And I don't know that it is, it never was successful, and I don't know that it was the oversight that wasn't the successful part. I'm not convinced that the program in and of itself is the unsuccessful part. So I'm not convinced this is something that I'm going to be supporting, and I voted against it previously myself. So when we come back to visit it, when we do the public hearing, I would really like to hear from more of the business owners who are affected by this. I don't think I've ever had anybody tell me yay for taxing me. I'm loving this tax I pay and the stuff I get from it. I hear from people who are saying the opposite. So I think that this is perhaps, it's a different iteration. It's a different group of people, having the city oversee the program, and I appreciate that we're trying to put other stuff out there, that we're trying to, you know, put another tool in the toolbox to make this work. I'm still not convinced that this is the right way to be doing it. So I'm, like I said, I think this discussion is a little premature, and I'm hoping that when we have the public hearing, that we were going to, we will hear more from a lot of the business owners that are affected by this and that pay into it. And if they all say yay, I'm willing to pay, then, you know, okay, fine. I'm just hoping that some of the ones who have said otherwise will come and say that publicly, so.
Councilmember Green.
All right. First of all, thanks for putting together this presentation. I appreciate it. I sat on the VVBA for the whole time, actually, I've been on the council here, so I've had intimate knowledge over kind of how the CVBID money was spent, and I actually was kind of disappointed that, when I looked at their books, how much was being spent on an executive director, which as you know, was the one kind of allocating the funds and, you know, a lot of money, almost more than what they get for the whole, you know, bid funds. My question to you is, we've talked a lot about taxation. What's the average price, if you have it, that the average business owner in the bid would pay for their bid fees? You know, I mean, say we got 1,500 square feet, I know it's square footage waste. What are we talking here, $400 a year? Are we talking like five grand a year?
So that varies based upon the type of business and the number of employees they have. So I think the lowest is $37, and that for a financial institution, it goes all the way up to $750.
For the whole year?
For the whole year.
Okay. So from a marketing standpoint, for, as a business owner, I have a business right here on Civic Center Drive, and I am not in the bid district, and I would say yay, I'm willing to pay if you would throw me in there and include me in your events. I really think the way that this is going right now from a grant process is a much more innovative way to do it. We've had a lot of the same events over and over that have had the same headaches and shortfalls financially, and I really feel like getting people like Children's Paradise involved and Synopolis involved and some more of other businesses and, you know, maybe even the school district or any nonprofits that can bring good events to our community is going to be fantastic, adding the, adding the cultural aspect where you can have a micro grant anywhere from, you know, a dollar to whatever, you know? So I think structuring it that way is a much better way to do it. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, the reason why we have to have this discussion right now is we're still on the hook to have some events with the current bid funds, correct?
So we've moved forward with staff administering the existing fiscal year.
Okay.
The reason we're having the discussion about the grants for the next fiscal year is how would the council like to move forward? When we talked about this before in terminating the agreement with the VVBA, staff committed to come back to you in February with some ideas specifically how to move forward. And working with the CVBID, this was a recommendation, or the advisory board, this was their recommendation to move forward. So what we're completing now on the existing work plan is a website for the downtown. We think that's one of the ways that we can really communicate what's happening down there, and there's really not a good, single source for that information, and then also getting marketing out about that.
Okay, and we're using those marketing companies that came and gave us all those presentations through the?
Yes, for the website.
Okay.
Geo-centric.
And if I'm correct, we're, with the bid funds, we're supposed to provide a certain number of events in that particular district?
So the way it's worded and the way the highway safety code is, we're generally supposed to invest the money that comes from an area back to that area.
Of course.
So for example, in Area C, they pay about 8% of the assessments. So about 8% of the value goes back to them. 13% of it goes to Area B, and 79% goes to Area A. So that's why a lot of the focus is in the Area A area.
So that's why we have some of the obscure businesses not getting as much attention because they're not paying as much of a percentage of the taxation per se. Okay. Well, I think that the accountability factor for this process is a lot better because we have individual companies coming in bidding annually for these, and if they're not good, we move on to the next one. So I love the process. I hope that it brings new, fantastic events to the area. I hope that all the business owners get together and do what they can and know that as a council, we will watch where your money is being spent and make sure that it's being allocated properly. So I thank the CVBID Advisory Committee, and I thank you for presenting. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras.
There's an item that's part of this kind of documentation that we have for this particular agenda item, and it is the grant program application and then the grant program reporting form. So as discussed before, we are not giving a lump sum upfront for not the full work being done. So only 50% of the granted money will be given upfront, and the other 50% will be given upon completion of the activity, which I think is a fantastic way to really have some quality control in this process. And I would invite, if you haven't looked at it, I would invite Councilmember Rigby to take a look at these applications because it really sets the-
Read the whole thing, thank you.
Okay. So it sets the tone for what we're trying to do in the downtown. And so the qualifying questions, just to apply for this grant, I'm going to read a few of them that I think are really important. So number one, a detailed description of how the activity will be successfully completed and what makes this activity unique or innovative. Question number two, which of the CVBID goals does this activity accomplish? Number three, how will this activity benefit the district? And that has a subset of how will it benefit Zone A, how will it benefit Zone B, how will it benefit Zone C? Number four, provide a list of success metrics. I think this one's really important because we need to look at this in a metric-based format. Whenever we're looking at money, it needs to be metric-based. So provide a list of success metrics, for example, number of attendees, social media engagement, increased sales for the downtown businesses, et cetera. Number eight, provide a budget for the activity, including all funding sources. If this is a profit-making event, how will the grant funds help amplify and add to the existing sources of funding? I wanted to highlight those because I think that's, those are really crucial. And again, that is part of the form to even apply for the grant. Okay, now, if you want to, if, say you got the grant, and you finished up, and you really want to get that last 50%, so then you have to do the reporting form. And I just want to highlight two of the questions. Question one, a detailed description of how the activity went, what went well, and what could have been improved for next, and what could be improved for next year. Number two, which of the CVBID goals did this activity accomplish? And so I just wanted to highlight a few of these because I, first of all, I'm blown away at how these- away at how these two forms were created and the whole process of 50% now, 50% later. I think that's really good. But for those who have questions as to, you know, is this, is this going to be innovative enough where, you know, we are going to be utilizing this tax money to the fullest potential and really create more economic activity downtown, I think that these questions really show us that this is going to be a serious new way of moving forward. I don't necessarily consider it, you know, a different iteration. This is a completely new species, if we're looking at it that way. And, you know, I love downtown, but downtown is really just happening on Fridays and Saturdays, and businesses can't sustain themselves on two really good days a week. So we need to start looking at, you know, how to use the limited funds that we have to really maximize the potential of all the businesses there, from the larger ones to the smaller ones. And I think with the grant program, we can start having a little bit more diversity in both the event and the size of the event. And, you know, perhaps we can start getting those Area Bs and Cs more activated as well. And I just want to end with one quick little fact. So a lot of us have always congratulated Only Losers Litter. I think they do an amazing job. And for those who don't know, they do a trash cleanup every month. But that whole program started with a $500 grant from the Women's Club, and it's morphed into this really great program that, you know, tons of kids get involved, their parents, you know, adults. And if something like that can get started with $500, I can't imagine, you know, using about $50,000 to have all these different opportunities to really look at our downtown in a different way, and for others to look at our downtown in a different way and be excited about, you know, I mean, the smallest little niche type of event can attract a lot of people from different places. And we need to start looking at, you know, how to attract more people. I know we've talked about Vista being a destination city. I don't necessarily believe that we are there. We have a lot of competition with, you know, the coastal cities. And so what do we have here in Vista that really differentiates our city? And I think that this micro grant and grant program can really start moving us in that direction of exploring different event opportunities. And, you know, I mean, part of, part of what a lot of the business owners have been talking about is this feeling of safety downtown. So some of this grant money, and correct me if I'm wrong, could also be utilized to enhance the safety downtown, so we can start looking at maybe some more lighting. And it doesn't have to be the boring old lighting. You know, we had an example of how, you know, lighting is being used in a creative way. But that's, that's pretty much all I have to say about that. Thank you.
That was a, that was a good presentation. Thank you. That's very thorough. I thought you did a good job on that, so. So the recommendation is, I guess I need a motion to adopt the resolution establishing the Center of Vista Business Improvement, just a grant program. And I would say, one thing is that I was there when we put the bid into place. I was on the VVBA at that time. I served many years on that. Actually, I was one of the founders of that organization many years back. But we put in, and we, it was voted by all the businesses and approved so that we would put some money into promoting the downtown. That was the whole, it wasn't a tax, it was a fee that we said we would all pay so that we could do some things to improve the downtown. And that's, I mean, I think over the years, it's been done in that way, and, you know, ups and downs, but different ways. And so I think this is a, I like this plan. I think that this would be a good plan, and it would, it will focus still different events downtown in that area, whatever area, you know, they can do different areas, but, and the people on the bid are business people downtown, so I think that they'll make good decisions that'll promote the downtown. So, and if you need somebody to promote the downtown, it doesn't just happen. It has to have things that go on down there to make people continue to want to come down there. So I'll be supporting this. So Councilmember Green.
I just move that we accept staff's recommendation to establish the Central Vista Business Improvement District Grant Program.
I'll second that, and Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've had the measurable goals. We've had the metrics before, we always have. I was also the staff liaison, council liaison to the VVBA for a while. Once bitten, twice shy. We've gone over and over and over about how this whole process works, and the benefit is huge to certain part versus other parts. And I understand, we always do, we have this conversation about the farther out you go, the less benefit you get and the less you pay. But then there's part of it who are like zero benefit, and that's, that's the complaint that we hear. So as part of this discussion, I was really hoping that we could, we could reevaluate how far out the bid is going and the people who are involved or not involved. And I'm a little disappointed that that's not part of this conversation because I think it's a valuable conversation to have. I do understand that having the city oversee it is different than the VVBA overseeing it, and I never questioned that at all, so I don't want you to think that I have. I just think that in my time here on the city council and in my time paying attention as a resident, it's never really been that successful of a program. We have a lot of great things going on downtown, and I, and I know that the downtown is a lot different now than it was 30 years ago. I mean, 30 years ago, it wasn't a place we went to. There was nothing going on. When I told my husband I'm going downtown, I was headed to San Diego. Now, when I say I'm going downtown, I'm going to Main Street or Michigan or Broadway or something. So it has come a long, long, long way. I am just a little bit wary, I'm a little gun-shy of all the things that we've put into doing this, and we have not, a lot of our businesses haven't reaped the benefit of it, and there have been a lot of problems with it. So I do question the sustainability of having the city run this program. So I'm just not quite there yet with this. And, and I know that we have had, in the years past, because we go through this every couple of years, approving the bid and giving the oversight to whatever entity it is, we have had times where members of the bid, businesses in that area, have signed yes or no, they want these events, or they want to be part of the bid. And there are quite a few that have said, no, they really don't want to be part of this. Have we talked to them? Have we gone and knocked on doors lately to talk to them, especially since the dissolution of the VVBA and all of the upheaval that we've experienced the last year? Have we had FaceTime with some of these businesses?
So on June 12th, we're going to have an annual meeting of the CVBID, and in that meeting, we'll give a presentation of where we are with the gazebo. We'll also talk about the homeless master plan or where we are with that. And then also, we're going to talk about where we are with the grant program. The day after, if the council approves it in March, we'll send out to all the businesses in the district the ability to apply for grants. This year, we're sending out a letter from the CVBID Advisory Chair, talking about the changes to the program, the, no longer the need to pay an administrative fee, and the grant program's ability to send that money back to those businesses to market and promote the downtown. So we've taken some of those steps. We've heard from participants, Mr. Kaiser and others at the advisory board, that we want to get out in this coming year and let people know what the changes have been. And that's one of the things that we'll do with the dollars that we have to make sure that we get the word out, that these changes are taking place and the ability to apply for the grants and the value of them.
So since last summer, I think it was, when the city council voted to remove the VVBA from the process, was there any outreach between that time and this time, between then and now, about the dissolution and about the changes? Was there anybody that came forward and talked about it, or? I know you're going to have a meeting in June and you're going to go over things, but I'm wanting to know what's the communication been with the, with the businesses in this district since all of the upheavals started? Well, can't say started because it's been going on for years, but since the latest round.
Well, we've had a few articles in the paper that have talked about that. And in working with the representatives for the district, those members that sit on the CVBID board or those members of that community that help us get the word out. So I might ask the chair, you know, some of the folks that he has talked to or other of the members, how they've communicated in the community to get that feedback as we've moved forward. But we have heard and we've talked about making sure that as we move forward, especially as we've changed these program details, how do we communicate that? Some of the first steps are the letter that will be going out here shortly, which will be going out tomorrow, to let folks know about the meeting in March, also let them know about the meeting in June to talk about all the program changes.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, I would ask everyone to please cash your votes. Yeah, I seconded it, actually. Motion passes with one no vote. So with that, we move on to our next discussion item, which is a traffic congestion management plan. Principal Traffic Engineer Sam Hussain is coming, and he will introduce the item.
Good evening. I have with us tonight our consultant from KOA, Charlie Schwinger, and he will give us the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We've been working closely with your city staff over the last few months in developing the traffic congestion management plan, and I'm delighted to be here tonight and to give you an update on that. Of course, the purpose of the plan is to identify on your major streets those locations that are experiencing traffic congestion, identify the causes of those, and then develop strategies for managing that. The traffic congestion management plan is being completed in two steps. The first step is identifying where the congestion is occurring and why it's occurring, and then subsequent to that, then developing the strategies to manage it. There are eight corridors in the city that are being studied. It includes East Vista Way, Civic Center Drive, Vista Village Drive, North Melrose Drive, South Melrose Drive, North Santa Fe Avenue, Sycamore Avenue, and Emerald Drive. And you can see on the map the extent of those. They're entirely within the city limits except for a portion of South Melrose, which also goes through Oceanside. Every person has their own perspective on what is a traffic congestion, and so it's very beneficial to have the Transportation Research Board, which is an official agency, has developed a highway capacity manual, established thresholds of what is traffic congestion. And in consulting with the staff here, we determined that for the city of Vista, there would be three measurements for determining what sections of those major streets are congested. The first measure is travel time through the corridor. And we established actual travel time by the floating car method, which is basically being in a car, driving not faster than the traffic or slower than the traffic, and seeing how long it takes to drive through each corridor. And we did multiple runs on that to establish an average. We compare that actual travel time with the posted speed limit, and the posted speed limit, we assume, is the desirable speed when it's not congested. And so when that travel time during the peak period is more than twice what it is during the non-peak period according to the posted speed, it indicates congestion on that corridor. The second, the second measure is the intersection level of service, and that's basically for all the vehicles entering that intersection during the peak hour, what is the average time that they're delayed? And if they're delayed more than 55 seconds, that's a level of service E. If we're giving a grade, A is good, B, C, D, E, and F. E is basically congested, and level of service F. And then the third measure is the number of stops, the percentage of vehicles that have to stop at each intersection. If more than 70% of the vehicles entering an intersection have to stop, then that indicates I'll have you note on this particular chart that we have more segments of your roadway congested during the morning than we do in the evening. Now, this graphic is a composite of the congestion during the morning peak period, and we've identified on that level of service E or F for intersections, those are the round circles. The squares mean that at that intersection, more than 70% of the vehicles stopped, and then the red line indicate the travel time congestion. And you'll note that both directions on Vista Village, both directions on North Santa Fe, southbound on Emerald, southbound on both North and South Melrose, and northbound on Civic Center, all have travel time congestion. Okay. During the PM, both directions on Vista Village and Civic Center, and then southbound on North Santa Fe are experiencing travel time congestion. The graphics, which I already flashed up there momentarily, basically provides a breakdown by segment rather than just the whole corridor, which pieces are congested. And we use that information to identify where the problem locations are and then to determine the solutions for that. We have that for AM and for PM. Oh, thank you. One more back.
Changes in here, but not over there. Next one.
Next slide.
Causes of congestion?
Thank you. What we're finding is that there's not just one cause of congestion, but congestion is, the causes are different at each location. So just an overview, the volume of traffic that you have moving through the city, a lot of it from outside the city down to the freeway, is largely responsible for your congestion. In addition to that, where you have closely spaced driveways and intersections, you have friction that slows the traffic down as people slow down to turn in on driveways or come off of driveways. If there's a signal and they stop and there's a startup, those contribute to delays. Rail crossings, you know, it doesn't take long for, for the traffic to back up for, well, miles, okay? When the sprinter comes through and the gates come down, I was out driving around and I had one from each direction. I sat there and sat there and sat there, looked in my mirror and thought, oh, those poor people behind me. Schools, that's a very short type of effect where parents drop their kids off or pick them up, and so there's a lot of congestion around the schools related to that. And then pedestrians, if they push the button, they get longer sometimes than the vehicles do to cross the street. And that's a good thing, they need that, but it does, it does introduce delay. And then just the number of lanes. There are some sections of the arterials where, where you drop lanes or add lanes, and, and it affects the volumes through. And then signal timing. And your city staff has done a great job with coordinating the signals, but sometimes if you're in the, not the favored movement, like you're trying to make a left turn or coming from the side street, of course, there's delay associated with that. There we go. There we go. Some strategies that we'll be looking at with your city staff is opportunities, and it really depends on some other factors, and we'll get to that in the next slide, but access management. Those can include medians, restricting driveways, consolidating driveways, adding or lengthening turn lanes. If you have traffic stacked up in the through lane and left-turn vehicles can't get into the lane, left-turn lane, because it's not long enough, then they're contributing to that stacking. On the other hand, if you have a lot of left turners and they spill back into the through lane, then you're blocking the through traffic. So we'll be looking at the lengths of those turn lanes. And signal timing and coordination, we can do a lot of management with the signals, determining who you want to favor. Do you want to favor the through traffic? Do you want to favor the side streets or the turning movements? And along with that, other intelligent transportation systems. And then there may be locations where you just need to add some lanes if you want to accommodate the traffic. So other considerations would be how much capacity you want to provide. You could build and build and build, and I almost guarantee you that whatever you build, cars are going to find their way to fill it. So it's something of a policy decision, all right, where do you want to draw the line? And then there's the development context. The streets are not just to move traffic from Oceanside to the freeway or from the county to the freeway. They're also to provide access to neighborhoods, to businesses, so that has to be a consideration as well. Walking and biking, we had the privilege of working with City on the Safe Routes to School Plan, Master Plan, and there's a huge need for accommodating people that are not driving. And how do you balance that? And then, of course, safety for people in the autos as well as people not in autos. So progress to date on congestion management, there are nine capacity increasing projects that have been completed, and those are listed in the TCM Plan Report. Five are in progress at the current time. So the next steps here are to continue to manage the traffic congestion. We'll be identifying additional projects besides those 14, and implementing the projects in a more systematic way through evaluation criteria. And started developing that criteria already. Generally, it prioritizes low-cost projects, minor construction projects, and projects that benefit primarily the city residents and not necessarily traffic from the outside. And then the projects identified will be ranked using those factors. So, oh, thank you. Criteria that we prepared as a draft with city staff is first striping, that's very cheap, you call that low-hanging fruit, it's easy to pick. Striping and then minor traffic signal modifications. Striping and minor widening, maybe just adding a turn lane. Major widening is like widening a whole street. And then cost, of course. And then working with intersection improvements first, because those are kind of the valves that control the traffic flow. You've got two streets sharing the same point, so you work with the intersections first, then the roadway segments. And then, as you get further from the city boundaries and from the SR 78, those are higher priorities, because SR 78 is primarily a Caltrans issue, and the city boundaries are benefiting a lot of your neighbors, perhaps, so. Next steps, then, will be to identify the new projects, estimate the cost of each project, and then assign weights to that evaluation criteria to prioritize the projects. At that, if you have any questions, I would love to answer them, if I can.
I have two speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers first? Okay. First Joshua Tienda, and then followed by Mary Gilman.
Good evening, council members, mayor. I'd like to speak of something more of a bigger picture of traffic management, and that is something that's been spoken about in Oceanside. I know it's not our purview, but really, they're talking about the Melrose Extension, because a lot of the traffic that comes from the 76 ends up in Melrose and is pushed to North Santa Fe, and it's, that really adds up to the traffic congestion. The other corridor that's really, I think it's a safety issue, is the Vista Way and the Warmlands area going to Urbana. That bottleneck every time in the evening, I live near there, and it bottlenecks every time. And in 2017, during the Lilac Fires, that was a major fire hazard, because the emergency vehicles couldn't make, because there's only two lanes going one direction and going the other direction, and the emergency vehicles couldn't get through. So we have to work with the other cities like Oceanside and the county, because I know that's county land, to address the traffic in a big-picture way to really make, let's see how we can look, address this issue, because it's, I know we have to prioritize our funds here at Vista, but we have to also work with the other agencies, other cities to address this traffic issue, because it's not just Vista, it's county-wide. And that's all I had to say.
Thanks, Joshua.
Good evening, Madam Council, I appreciate you.
Talk right in the microphone, right here.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. Like to speak a few minutes. This issue, of course, as far as the traffic congestion, is important to all residents, and I'm glad to see that there is a management plan being worked, and I look forward to seeing more details. So as Joshua, the other speaker, mentioned, there are areas of particular concern, and mine in particular is East Vista Way. Between the 78 and the 76, that is used as a major thoroughway. And from Taylor up to the 76, it's one way in each direction, and it's a bottleneck, you know, at high-traffic times, but any time of the day, it's hard to get out onto that street. So I would like to hear what is the plan for making that area work? And, you know, of course, there's properties and businesses that have been there as long as any of us living there, so I'd hate to see them being taken away. And I'm most concerned with keeping the rural nature of that area and preserving the natural habitat and the open spaces and the farmlands along that area. So, you know, and also in addition to that, just in keeping with the Climate Action Plan, that the development should be occurring along the areas of transportation and job centers, and I'm just concerned with all the number of development projects up through that East Vista Way corridor that continue to impact the quality of life, the fire risk, and the traffic congestion for there. So I do look forward, is that plan going to be posted on the website as a meeting addendum? And I look forward to seeing how more specifically the plan comes to be in this area. Thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you, thanks for your comments. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for, this is very comprehensive, and I know that we had meetings, and we talked a lot about the different neighborhoods throughout Vista, throughout our entire city. I think you did a great job on this. I know this is something that the council has put out there, that this is a high priority for us, as it is for our residents, and I'm excited that we're doing something about it, that people can see tangible, yes, they really are doing something, instead of just saying they're doing something. So I appreciate that very much. And a lot of you know that we have a lot of county roads in Vista. And Melrose, as you pointed out, there's a block or two that goes through South, through Oceanside on South Melrose. I live over there, and you can always tell when you're in Vista, and then you're in Oceanside for that block, because the roads are different. Sometimes it's us, sometimes it's them. Sunset is a hot mess, but that's a county road there. And so we have some other ones, and I just wanted to let people know, and I know it was brought up, Joshua brought it up, we work a lot with the county, and when we have issues here that the county is not really aware of, because we see their trucks around every now and then, but not too often, city staff is really very good about responding to those requests, and getting, making phone calls and getting somebody to take responsibility for it. I will say, however, the county has not always been as responsive as we would like on getting some things done. I'm hoping our new supervisor can help a little more with that. So this is exciting. Thank you very much for the work you've done with this, both of you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Contreras.
I want to point out something on the agenda report. It's on page two, and it reads, "The criteria results in a hierarchy where low costs and minor construction projects that benefit the largest number of city residents receive priority rankings." I like that, but I think it's not looking at the whole picture, because some of these improvements are catastrophic to the residents that live where the improvement is made. And so I think we have to start looking at what is the harm that's being caused by this improvement? And I seriously think that that is a component that we need to start discussing, because I'll give you an example. And I really appreciated, you know, you talking about how adding lanes, cars will just find a way to get there. They'll fill up the lanes, and, you know, that gets to the concept of induced demand. And so, for example, North Melrose, the addition of that lane has caused so much harm to that area. You know, there are individuals that they can't even get their mail anymore, because the post office, the drivers don't, can't safely provide them that service, so they have to go to the post office. I think we have something in the works to address that. But not only are they not able to get their mail, but I've had several residents from there, you know, begging about looking at the safety or the lack of safety consideration when we're looking at adding lanes, because I know when I was walking by there, I could feel the cars, and cars go really fast, and it feels like you're going to get sucked in. You know, the bike lane was reduced to a thin white line, essentially, and the residents are just not happy about that. And then, you know, we do this widening, and it can't accommodate, the widening isn't fully done throughout the whole segment. And so there was a point that was made about, you know, part of the congestion is where those lanes end, and you have to merge back. I come from the perspective that we should do basic infrastructure improvement first, and then add more complex solutions if needed. And what I mean by that is we should most definitely be focusing on a complete synchronization of our traffic lights before we start adding more lanes, because what you do is you start creating a highway-like, freeway-like environment that really destroys neighborhoods, and I don't want to see that happen. There are some areas, you know, perhaps like East Vista Way and Warmlands, where the addition of some more space for cars to move around makes sense. And I also agree with, you know, the turning lanes maybe being extended, because that is a huge bottleneck. But when we're looking at completely adding new lanes, I feel like it's completely premature when we don't even have synchronized lights. So we have to take into consideration the harm that can be done to neighborhoods when we're looking at improvements. Okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm very clear with that, because we have too many examples of neighborhoods that aren't as safe as they used to be, and neighborhoods where the primary mode of transportation is by foot or bike. And so that has to be taken into consideration as well. Other than that, you know, I really enjoyed the presentation. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I actually have a question about the same stretch of road, North Melrose. I wanted to understand whether or not we've evaluated what we think the level of service improvement might be if we did eliminate the one area where we could re-stripe to create three lanes. Do we know, do we have an estimate of what the level of service improvement might be?
Is it by removing some of the lanes that were added?
No, no, by...
The improvement since we added the lanes?
No. If we were to continue the third lane...
Oh, through the area that we don't have?
Yes.
We have not looked at that specifically, and kind of go back to comments from Councilwoman Contreras, the criteria that we kind of, just a preliminary list that we came up with for this updated traffic congestion management plan, I think will result in a projects that are kind of maybe shorter stretch, capacity improvements, probably more focused on intersections. However, the criteria, I mean, the plan will develop proposed projects for the, all the areas of identified congestion.
The area of North Melrose, just north of SR 78, where we left it...
From Copper to Olive.
Where we left the parking, yeah.
Yeah, so it will be, I guess I should just say, it will be looked at as part of the proposed projects in this plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fair for us to have the discussion about what the level of service improvement would be. We need the data, you know, we need the analysis to be able to make a decision. And I totally agree with Councilwoman Contreras about the need to make sure it's safe. But frankly, there are competing demands, and that's what politics is about, and people want to get home to their families faster. They want to wait in traffic less, and when we went out and we surveyed our residents, that was the number-one issue that our residents asked us to solve. It's something that people care about, and we have a duty to look at how we achieve that goal, that people have told us is their highest priority for us to solve. So I would like to get a report on what the level of service improvement was estimated to be there. Can you, if we're going to get an update later on this, then I can wait, but if this is the right time to ask, what is the level of, what is the status of the South Vista Traffic Signal Interconnect Program?
It's in construction. It should be wrapping up in the next couple of months, where we have all the communications upgraded in the south half of the city, and we sort of have a jumpstart on the north half. We're getting some equipment being put in ahead of the major upgrade through the grant. So we're actually going to have our communications upgraded pretty much in the entire city in the next three months or so, in addition to installing what we call the Bluetow devices, those kind of the traffic performance measurement systems. So all that is really going to be done in the next three months or so. We'll be starting, we'll start getting some data back from those devices, in addition to having our signal communications up to date without interruption, which is a big part of the problem that we're having now, where signals go offline that we can't communicate with, update this time and the clocks and so on. So all that is in progress.
That's good. I definitely would like to receive more information about the project when it's complete, and I know we're not sure yet that we're going to be able to avail ourselves of all of the possible features of that program. So what's the timeline to roll those out, and what are the future benefits that we can expect? When we get to the point where we're ready to talk about that, I'd like to get into that further. The last thing I was going to ask is, would it be possible, because you've got a lot of spreadsheet and lists... lists and stuff here, but because this is one of the most important issues that we're dealing with in the community, I would really like to see particular intersections and routes, and I would like to see side-by-side comparisons, where we talk about, okay, in, you know, 2017, here was the level of service. Here's the change we made. Here's the improvement to the level of service. That is how I want to hold the staff and our consulting team accountable, to actually make improvements that make a difference. Because what I see in front of me is a large list of observations and a list of projects. And I am proud of you for the work you're doing here. And this is incredibly important, and I appreciate how much staff has prioritized this. But in order that I better understand it, and that we are better able to communicate it to the general public, I'd like to get down to, you know, this picture, this was bad, here's the improvement, and it's slightly less bad. Hopefully, maybe it cannot be bad at all, but I would really like to see that kind of side-by-side, where we go, okay, we, you know, we improved traffic flow here by, you know, this level of speed, and let's get a little granular on some, I mean, there are not very many major intersections here.
And this is...
We're only dealing with a few dozen, so...
I was going to say, this is exactly what the plan documents right now, all the existing conditions, with the level of service at each intersection, and the AM and the PM peaks, as well as every segment of roadway with the existing travel time. So once we propose, develop all those projects, then we'll be able, before we even implement, we'll run it through that criteria to see where it falls in the priority, as well as how much it would improve the traffic if it was implemented at that intersection and roadway segment.
So you think we'll be able to do that before and after in the future?
Yes.
Cool.
And that's why we documented all the existing conditions.
So I'm getting ahead of you, is what you're saying?
What's it?
I'm getting ahead of the process, is what you're saying.
It's, yeah, still, you know, obviously, we just, right now, we're just at the level of documenting the existing conditions.
Yeah, we got to do that before, before we can get to the after.
Yeah, so we, we did counts at every intersection in the morning and the evening, as well as we did the travel times through all the corridors. And thus, to document all that, just to document the existing conditions. And then, once we propose the projects, then we can actually run it through the analysis again, and see what the improvement would be before we even implement.
Very good. Thank you for your hard work on this, all of you.
I appreciate it. And I'll jump in here on the Melrose thing, where we left the one lane. It was because there was apartments on one side and the mobile home park on the other side, and it was very contentious. They would lose their parking, and it was, it was, it was a big mess. And that's why we left it with their parking for the time being. But to try and take that away again, it'd be very difficult, I will just say, because we went through this once. And I understand, and I drive it all the time, and I know where that lane ends, you just kind of have to merge in. But I, we haven't had, I've never had a problem with it. I always just merge in, and I do it during heavy traffic times. I take my grandson, pick him up from school in a lot of traffic, or take him there. So anyway, I will go on to Councilmember Green.
All right. So just to clarify, because while Councilmember Franklin was saying that, I was like, wow, that's genius. We don't have a baseline report in 2017 of what our intersections were rated in 2017?
We do not.
You do not? So we didn't do like a study of where they were in 2017?
Yeah, the last round was a little less formal.
Okay.
Where, this was very extensive. We had a collection, you know, including, like I mentioned, the counts in the morning and evening, as well as the travel time studies that we did. So this was...
Much more comprehensive.
Yeah. Where we've done, you know, as we mentioned, nine capacity projects have already been implemented, plus there's a few more in progress. So we, there's not, you know, before and after documentation that we have on that.
So this will be our baseline report, moving forward, per se?
Informally, just some of the intersections where we added capacity, I saw increase in volumes. So we're getting more throughput through the intersections, because we did a lot of capacity laying, increasing some of the intersections. It's getting more traffic through.
Yeah. I love your report, by the way. I speak with a lot of community members about particular intersections. I saw you smile when you got trapped by the railroad track. I actually had a conversation with Sam early on when I was elected. I waited 13 minutes to turn left on South, on Santa Fe to Vista Village. 13 minutes just to turn left, and I was in the front of the light. Funny thing, Sam was at the other light, stuck on the other side. So it was awesome. He knew it. One thing that super helped me out right here is the corridor travel times. You know, we complain, I'm guilty of it as well, is, hey, when I get off on Vista Village to drive home, and I live off of Foothill and Vista Way, so I have to go that way pretty often when I'm getting off the freeway, to look and see, it's 1.8 miles from the freeway to Civic Center Drive, or 1.2 miles, rather, and it's supposed to take you 1.8 minutes, and right now it's taking you 4.5. So it's really 2.7 extra minutes that you're having to take in high-traffic area. I mean, I want to free up traffic flow like everybody else, but I think having these numbers to tell people, hey, man, it's an extra two minutes right now. We're going to try to cut that down where it's an extra one minute. Or, you know, when you break it down to say, hey, you're not sitting on that road for 30 minutes on your way home. You're sitting on that road for an extra five to seven. You're sitting on that road for an extra three to five. You know, in the moment, it feels like, am I ever going to get out of this traffic? But being able to look at this study on every single street, what the flow times are, what the actual travel time is in the AM, what the travel time is in the PM, that helps me for my citizens. So when you do reports like this, this is fantastic. And also to say, hey, these are the causes of congestion. Because I've heard Madam Mayor Ritter say it several times, a lot of our traffic is this regional through-traffic. The people coming from other cities that think, hey, thanks for freeing up Melrose, we're going to blast down it. And I've heard a lot about the safety as well, no median on those three lanes on each side, kind of dangerous, people cutting across and things. So there's a lot of things we can do as far as safety. But I want to commend you on your report, and I also want to thank you for this travel times thing, because these are numbers. I always tell people, it's not magic, it's math. So when I can break down to somebody, hey, you're only sitting for an extra couple of minutes, you know? If you can tell people, give yourself an extra 2.7 minutes to get home in a high-traffic area, give yourself an extra, you know, if they can prepare for it, I think it's better, as opposed to just not knowing what you're up against. So these facts right here, the comprehensive report that you did, are extremely helpful. I really appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to not only the repairs that we make and the improvements that we make, but also showing how much of an improvement did we make? How many minutes are we saving you? And on a weekly and annual basis, how much time is the City of Vista giving you with your families? Because that's all what we want. You know, I got four kids. If they're teenagers, I don't know that they want me home, but I'd like to get home earlier. So anyway, thank you again for the report. Really appreciate it.
Our city manager wants to jump in.
And since it was mentioned, maybe Mr. Hassan can give an update on the controllers or the new controllers that were grant-funded that will be installed at the Vista Village-North Santa Fe intersection.
Yeah, so part of the next grant, which is where in design on, not only will it upgrade all the communications in the north part of the city, but it also consolidated the operation at Vista Village-North Santa Fe, South Santa Fe Main, and Vista Village Olive. Right now, there's three separate controllers. We do our absolute best to try to step out of what we call the preemption, once the trains cross through. And that's a complicated operation. So with one controller, we should have a lot more control over it. Part of it is that northbound left from Santa Fe to Vista Village, which could take, you know, seven, eight minutes, nine, and I, it could take even that long, because depending on how kind of far apart the trains are separated, because it never kind of gets back to it until it gets through both trains and everybody, all the other movements are served. So that will give us a lot more control about how to exactly kind of sequence the movements after the trains go through, and how much time to give them, so that a left turn is not skipped.
Yeah, and you see those cars hanging in the intersection all the time. I mean, it's, it's a mess. So glad that you're...
That will be improved.
Perfect.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Contreras.
I'm just really thankful that Deputy Mayor Franklin brought up the data. It's a conversation that I had with Patrick. And it's actually really shocking to me that we don't have a way to compare before and after, right? But as I was sitting up here, I had a thought, and I just want to express it and see if it makes sense, and if this is a way for us to kind of look at a before and after. But whenever there's, you know, development proposed or anything like that, there are some traffic studies that come along. I mean, is it possible to look at some of those traffic studies from the past and see, okay, this was done before we added a lane? Because, you know, I'm really glad we're having this discussion, because if we're adding a lane and we're just shaving off, you know, 60 seconds, I think that's a conversation that we need to have in our community. Hey, do we want to increase the number of lanes for, you know, 60 seconds, two minutes, three minutes of convenience, but then having more people see Vista as appealing to just cut through? I think that we really need to bring that conversation out to the community. I don't, I would disagree, though, that it's politics. I don't think we need to be talking about politics, but it's very community-based. And, yeah, I just think, I'm really glad that you brought it up, because it is, it's a serious way to look at, did this improve? What did it improve by? And then we can have these honest and transparent discussions with our community, and let, you know, get more input as to, hey, do you guys want to add another lane and save, you know, two, three minutes? Or would you rather, you know, be stuck for two or three minutes and not have more induced demand? So, yeah, I don't know if that would be a possibility.
And this documentation of the existing conditions is really going to allow us to do that comparison, because now we do have all those intersection levels of service that are formally evaluated based on the counts, and, you know, the federal methodology and all that for level of service, just like traffic impact studies do for development. So we have that baseline, and that's why we really wanted, you know, to kind of gather all this data, you know, it took months. And we wanted to do this faster, but then I thought, you know, we should document all this. So now we have the level of service at the intersections, we have the travel times in the corridors. This is our baseline. So anything we do, even before we do it now, just like development, traffic studies can assess the impacts of development, this will be able to tell us what the improvement would be from a single improvement. And that's what we will have once we develop these projects. And one thing, you know, the criteria that we displayed to evaluate the projects, proposed projects, to run, run the projects through them, to prioritize them, you know, we can add level of service and travel time improvement to that criteria and give it a weight, if that's, you know...
I think that would be a good idea. So am I hearing this correct, that there's no way to extrapolate data from previous traffic studies?
There is.
Okay, because there's no, it's not, it's not in a standard format to compare. We wouldn't be comparing apples to apples. It would be apples to oranges. Okay.
We would be absolutely. This is a, really, it's a federal methodology for intersections, at least. The level of travel times is normally not done. It's part of, you know, it's kind of a highly specialized thing that we wanted to do as part of this documentation, so that we're not only documenting level of service at intersections, but also the travel times. But the level of service, that is standard methodology, that we can go back to development traffic impact reports and look at fine intersections and fine level of service before. We did certain improvements, because we have those days of when we did things. And then we can compare it to what we came up with here. We can do that.
Yeah, because I think that any data that we have that can be used to better illustrate certain improvements that we've already done, that would be really important for us and for the public to see. And then, moving forward, we have this great baseline that we can then, you know, have better comparisons. But if there's any way to extrapolate data from previous studies and take a look at, you know, what it was prior, and then, you know, with an addition of, you know, a third lane, or a median, or whatever the case might be, it seems like it might be a lot of work, but I think that there's a lot of benefit, because, you know, we can get a better idea of, did this just shave off 17 seconds, and now people are very upset because they can't get their mail? Yeah, kind of thing.
We can go back and see what studies were done. So obviously, the traffic impact studies for development don't cover the whole city.
Yeah.
Specific spots. We'll see what we have.
Because even in those specific spots, I mean, that would be still a good thing to illustrate, right, with hard data. But I really appreciate having this baseline, because it's just going to make it so much easier for us to really be on the same page and have a really good conversation amongst ourselves as a body and with the public. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Deputy Mayor.
I just can't help myself but to give you a piece of information, because I ran into this in my district, where the postal service decided they didn't like a change we made to the roadway, so they just stopped delivering the mail. They don't have the right to do that under federal law. So we'll win that battle. They have to deliver the mail. It's a federal legal mandate. So I don't know what they're doing over at the post office, but they don't, they don't have the right to just decide that they don't want to deliver the mail anymore.
Okay, with that, this is a, this is a, just a receive and file or receiving the presentation. And thank you for your presentation. It was very interesting, and we'll look forward to the future. Oh.
And before we close, Mr. Hassan, do you have all the information you need from this?
The, I think the next steps part of this, which is the criteria, obviously, that we listed, that there was some input on, if, maybe at least there's a consensus that that's where we kind of went ahead. Because the criteria, again, it's a preliminary list, and the resultant top priority projects from that criteria will be the ones that will be kind of mostly in the inner part of the cities, rather than on the boundaries. So it will favor projects, I guess I should say, that will benefit the residents moving around the city, rather than kind of promote regional traffic on the perimeters of, perimeters of the city, the boundaries. So a couple of ideas was, you know, adding level of service improvement to that criteria, possibly impacts to the residents. If there's a consensus on that, then we can take what we already developed, add those two things, and just kind of run with that. And all the projects that we would propose would run through that criteria to come up with their priority.
Is there a consensus?
Do I see heads shaking? Okay, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we move on to our last discussion item, which are accessory dwelling units. Councilmember Green asked this item to be placed on the agenda, so I'll let him introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I also devised a gorgeous slideshow for you all to look at. I'm thinking perhaps my amazing city clerk can get that up on there. The reason why I brought the accessory dwelling unit discussion forward is a lot of the cities in North County have been addressing this and trying to make more creative ways to get the community to build accessory dwelling units and help with the shortfall with our housing stock. So I just pressed this button right here, and it switches. Is that cool? Okay, let's see. Boom, it's working. All right. So I know that you guys all know what is an ADU, but I wanted to break it down for you. An ADU is a secondary dwelling unit with complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, and generally takes three forms. So the City of Vista recognizes these three forms. Detached, the unit is separated from the primary structure. Attached, the unit is attached to the primary structure. Or they repurpose an existing space, like your master bedroom, I've even seen the garage. Within the primary residence, it's converted to an independent living unit. Here's an example of some accessory dwelling units. I just kind of wanted to show you guys that these units are pretty cool. There's some that are super posh, and they would actually be huge benefits to some of these properties in our area, and would really help property owners. So I've seen some not-so-nice ones, but these ones are pretty freaking awesome. Next one is Ask an Expert. What do the experts say? California housing production is not keeping pace with demand. In the last decade, less than half of the needed housing was built. The lack of housing is impacting the affordability, which we all know, with the average housing costs in California exceeding the rest of the nation. Now, as affordability becomes more problematic, people drive longer distances between a home that's affordable and where they work, or they double up to share space. I've just heard the community living, a lot of married couples are getting together and renting these properties on their own, both of which reduce the quality of life and produce negative environmental impacts. I took this information right out of the Housing and Community Development ADU memorandum that was done back in December, and I made sure that you guys all have copies of it. And as we get to the end, I'll kind of explain a little bit more here. So, also, ADUs are different form of housing that can help California meet its diverse housing needs. Young professionals and students desire to live in areas close to jobs, amenities, and schools. So I'd like to think that I came up with all of this myself, but unfortunately, I did not. What have we done? So the reason I brought this forward is, the City of Vista has not reviewed or addressed development impact fees for ADUs since we updated our second unit requirements per state legislation in 2003. The state specifically says that cities should not be charging the same development impact fees on these actual second units that we do for new primary housing. So when we have these developers come in here and they're building, you know, hundreds of units, they're susceptible to these, these development fees. When your house was built, you paid development fees on it. So the state says the secondary units shouldn't be charged development impact fees. Now, to give you an idea, to build a 1,000-square-foot second unit in the City of Vista, it would cost you an estimated $18,644.42 in fees. That's before you even broke ground, and in addition to any fees that you pay an architect or contractor to design the unit. Now, what's important about that is $14,700 of those fees are simply development impact fees. $3,762 are the actual city costs, so the expenses for our staff time for permitting, plan checking, and inspections. So all that extra money in development impact fees goes into different pots. So I have C Exhibit A here. This is Exhibit A. So this is a list of just what the actual fees are on a 1,000-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. The first set of fees that I'm going to show you here are your development impact fees, which total $14,701. Now, you'll see here, the building, the development impact fee for the park on your accessory dwelling unit is $7,500. The public facilities fee is $1,218. The signal... The signal impact is twenty-seven ninety, and also the traffic impact is twenty-seven ninety. Now, these units are going to be designed for people like my grandma or my aunts and uncles, or maybe me someday when my kids take my main house and hopefully let me have, you know, I mean, that's what they're designed for. Um, they're not designed for families that are going to parks, per se. In my opinion, fourteen thousand and seven hundred dollars in these impact fees, when the primary residents have already paid these fees, seems excessive and it's detouring our residents from building actual second units and giving us credit towards our RENA numbers for these second units. The thirty-seven hundred in fees, as you can see right here, plan check fees, permit fees, uh, plan review fees, these are actual hard costs that we are paying our city staff to look into. And I'm not saying that we cut the cost of our staff time, I'm just trying to come up with a way that we can waive some development impact fees to encourage this. Now how much? So from a financial standpoint, waiving these development impact fees won't have a significant financial impact on our city. What I want to make sure you know is that over the last two years, a total of 11 second units were finalized and we had 17 granny flats, or things that weren't considered, uh, actual second units that were done. So that's 28. Both units paid the same exact permit and plan check fees, but only the second units paid the development impact fees, um, while the granny flats didn't. We only got credit for those 11 units towards our RENA numbers. Now, the revenue generated off these development impact fees equates to one-tenth of 1% of our total annual general fund budget. I want to say it was a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars over two years. So it's a very minimal amount that we're making right now. However, we are losing units that we could be applying toward these, toward these RENA numbers that we're trying so hard to hit. Um, so that's why I put right there note, we do not receive any credit towards RENA numbers for the granny flats. Regulations and guidelines, uh, the state of California, the state guidelines on these developments, impact fees apply to second units on properties owned R1, E1, and A1. Applying these same guidelines to our city would mean this change would have no impact on the specific plan areas, including the majority of properties in Shadow Ridge and the South Vista area. The city does currently exclude the R1B zone, which I'm hoping in discussions moving forward that perhaps this council would choose to include with the development impact fee waiving. When you look at Exhibit B, which I'm going to show you, which is our zoning map, you'll see that the R1B zone within our city is in an area that I feel would greatly benefit from these types of housing. It's a lot of it in North Vista, um, East Drive, Boba Link, Swallow. Those properties were initially a 6,000 minimum square foot lot, which is why they were zoned R1B, and I believe it was probably, you know, due to the size of the lot. My take on it is that as long as they can meet our same, same setback and code requirements and zone requirements, that they should be entitled to the same property rights as an R1 zone would be. Now, this change in development impact fees does or would not affect the city of Vista's current requirements regarding setbacks, parking, et cetera. We would still require the one spot per unit that we require, um, per our city Vista fees. Now, when you look at the zoning map right here, it's a little bit hard to read, so you'll probably have to look at the map that I gave you there. But that R1B zone you'll see is mainly in North Vista, right down there at where like Santa Fe and Bo Beers meet, um, you know, right outside the townsite area, per se. The purple area which you see, which is the specific plan area, those areas are not impacted because they are considered specific plans and those properties aren't zoned to receive the benefit. So you're not going to have a bunch of ADUs popping up in Shadow Ridge in those communities that won't necessarily facilitate that type of, uh, development, per se. It's a big thing in my district where you have the properties where the lot size is a lot larger and we have such a housing crisis and an affordability issue. Moving on here, the San Diego Board of Supervisors approved a new initiative to encourage homeowners in the county's unincorporated areas to develop granny flats to help ease the region's housing solution. Granny flats, um, are the equivalent to second units in Vista. So, uh, the terminology gets a little skewed. Some granny flats, what I consider granny flat doesn't actually have a kitchen. A second unit has a kitchen, it's a complete unit, and that's when those development impact fees are implemented. So you might even see properties where they look like granny flats, but they don't have a stove in there. Well, that's why, because it's technically not a second unit and it's technically not rentable, it's just supposed to be additional living space. So this initiative would waive county permit and development impact fees over the next five years for property owners who want to build granny flats or other small dwellings on lots with existing homes. The hope is those units will then be used for family members or rented out of, as a source of income for property owners. The reason why I want to put this in here is I feel like it really is a nonpartisan issue. It's a housing issue and our city, our county board of supervisors pass it unanimously. Diane Jacob, uh, the board chairwoman, said this is a critical step in our ongoing efforts to address the region's housing crisis, especially the serious need for affordable housing. These new, this new program is the quickest and easiest way for us to expedite the development of housing. And Jim Desmond, who is one of our new county supervisors, I know all my colleagues are really good, uh, you know, acquaintances of his, is, he says, "There's no single solution to the regional housing shortage, but an average savings of fourteen thousand dollars on accessory home will raise property values and offer more affordable places to live. We will continue to be creative and challenge the status quo to solve the region's housing crisis." And that's what I'm kind of asking my council to do tonight, is whether we implement this where it's going to be tied to affordable units, which I know our affordable units with our RENA numbers we're not hitting, whether we implement this for a period of time where it's, hey, five years, we're going to do it. I don't know what the feedback is going to be, and that's kind of why I brought it forward. But I really do feel like we do need to challenge the status quo and we do need to be creative in solving the housing crisis that's up against us. So the purpose of this presentation as a discussion item is just to discuss the benefits of waiving development impact fees on accessory dwelling units with the city council. So waiving these fees will help increase our housing stock while avoiding, while avoiding the significant focused impacts large development brings to our city. So when you put a, you know, 300-unit apartment complex or a 40-unit townhome complex or 150-unit townhome complex, there are significant focused impacts. An ADU in a community here and there isn't going to have that type of impact, but it is a good way to increase our units. Uh, let's see, waiving these fees will increase property values for homeowners. Having an ADU, a thousand-square-foot one could add up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars value to your property. It's a fantastic gift to the homeowner residents of the city of Vista. Waiving these fees will encourage property owners to build second units as opposed to just the granny flats, which will help us hit our RENA numbers. We lost 17 units this year just because they didn't want to pay the 14 grand. If we could get those extra 17 units back, that'd be awesome. Seventeen units is 17 units, every unit counts. Waiving these fees also shows our citizens that we're actively looking at ways to build within our city without impacting our amazing Vista residents and voters' quality of life. A lot of residents come to me with the developments that come and they don't, they're not aware of all the processes, but they do feel like we're building a lot and we're just kind of shoving it down their throat as opposed to finding creative ways. And we have to build, we have to hit our RENA numbers. And this is a way I feel like the community can actually benefit from it as opposed to be, you know, in a big uproar because new development's going on. So what I'm hoping, this beautiful picture is our amazing new city council, is that when I'm done here, that we'll be able to discuss what we can do for our community if waiving, uh, the development impact fees on ADUs is something that you guys think is a benefit. If you don't think it's a benefit to my city, I'd like to know why, because everything I look at shows that it is a benefit. Obviously, if we want to put different stipulations on it, we can. I also attached two different articles. Um, one was on the supervisors waiving the granny flat fees, just so that you could kind of review it all yourself. The other one is the mayor of Poway, Steve Voss, who's actually running for county supervisor as well, he's proposing that the city of Poway actually pay for accessory dwelling units. And he's got a whole program where we're, they're going to use affordable housing funds to build accessory dwelling units. Uh, it's called his Homes Program, Home on My Extra Space. And initially, people were against it, thought it was crazy. Well, now there's getting a lot more behind it, because when you look at our affordable housing dollars, it's my understanding that the amount of money that it takes to build one affordable housing unit, $350,000 roughly, okay? It doesn't cost that much to build an ADU in somebody's backyard, apparently, which is what Steve Voss said. He's been in politics longer than me, he's been looking at numbers longer than me, and this is a program he came up with. I'm not saying I want to use the city of Vista's affordable housing money to build ADUs, but it's an idea. And what we need to do is look at new ideas to increase the housing stock and also benefiting our community. So I wanted you guys to look at this so that you could just see, it doesn't necessarily, you know, affect anything political party-wise, it's just saying, hey, we love Vista, what can we do for our Vista homeowners? And what can we do to help hit our RENA numbers, which we know are super tough to hit? So in addition to that, I also provided you guys with the accessory dwelling unit memorandum from the California Department of Housing, so that you could see kind of what the Housing Community Development, um, department says about ADUs, positives, negatives, and all that. So, um, that's my presentation. Hopefully you guys have, uh, some stuff to add. And what I would like to accomplish from this is to perhaps give direction to staff to maybe come back, agendize an item and say, hey, when it comes to ADUs, this is all the input that we got from council, these, this is what we think should happen. And like I say, if we did it as an affordable unit, that would help because our affordable numbers are down, although we do have new affordable units coming in. But there's different stipulations you could add. So any stipulations you guys could add that would help benefit the citizens of Vista, I'd be open to. And anything you don't like or think this is a horrible idea, please let me know, because I would love to hear the why. Thank you.
You did a lot of homework, thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Councilmember Contreras.
I'm really excited about this item because, um, yeah, I grew up on, on that side of Vista, like foothill, warm lands, and it's really spacious over there, which is awesome. Um, but we, we really are facing a housing shortage, shortage crisis and, um, I don't know if anybody has the numbers right off the top of their head, but, uh, where we're at in percentage of affordable, um, housing units that have been built, I think it's like 50% or less, right, where we're at right now. So, um, you know, for better or for worse, the state is going to be breathing down our neck and making sure that we are, um, creating more affordable housing units and not just market rate or above market rate. And, you know, as, uh, councilmember Green said, every single unit counts. So I'm 100% for this. I mean, I think that, uh, a really good case was made as to why the impact fees shouldn't really be considered, um, for, for the ADU. So, um, I really thank you for this presentation. I know that cities, you know, around San Diego County are taking a hard look at this and, and trying to move forward because, you know, we're all feeling the pinch, um, from the state and we do have to provide more housing stock that is affordable. Uh, so this is a great way for us, you know, to get a few more units, um, under our belt here in Vista. And so I really do appreciate all the homework that you did and the presentation that you put together and the fact that you ended it, you ended the presentation with that really awesome picture, so thank you.
Councilmember Green, did you?
Yeah, one other thing I just wanted to add is in investigating this and I said, hey, affordable housing and putting stipulations on giving something, you know, dangling a carrot, per se, and saying, hey, it's affordable housing. When I was speaking with different members of my community on, you know, what my council decides to do with waiving ADU fees, is if we do say, hey, these are only going to be for units that are considered affordable, I want to make sure that everybody knows the average median income in San Diego County is $85,000 a year. The people who are renting these properties are probably going to be making less than that. And if you're going to be renting them to your aunts, your uncles, your grandmas, your family members, they can still qualify as affordable units. Um, there is a process that I know, uh, Mr. Conley I spoke with about, we'll speak with you guys, as far as Amanda Lee would have to review the affordable housing to make sure that we got the credit and make sure they qualify and things. But we really did do a lot of investigation into, hey, how can we make this work? What's the best way to do it? And how would it affect our citizens? So even though we say, hey, we might make the stipulation of we're only waiving it if it's considered affordable housing, it's going to be within what you were probably going to make it rent for anyways, in my opinion. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Deputy Mayor.
Earlier, I was told that our ADU, uh, development impact fees are higher than our apartment unit development impact fees. Is that true? And if so, by how much?
The ADU fees for certain criteria are charged per unit, so they would be assessed as if it was a single-family home. There are certain fees that do not apply to ADUs that would apply to an apartment. So if you look at the overall fee total, I think an apartment still pays a little bit of a higher development impact fee. But in certain criteria, yes, an ADU pays higher. For example, parks, the $7,500 fee doesn't apply equally to a multifamily unit.
What would the, um, what would the park impact fee be for a multifamily unit?
It's in the 6,000-some range, it's still fairly high.
A thousand square feet?
Sixty-nine hundred, I think.
Per, per unit. So there's a higher fee for a single-family home than there is for an apartment unit.
What is the, what is the thousand-square-feet that we keep referencing here? Is that just?
That was just a number.
Yeah, okay. But, but is the, is all, it's all based on just per unit, not based on?
Certain fees on that list are charged per square foot, most of the staff costs.
I, um, and, Councilmember Green, you said we lost the number of, uh, of units because people opted to build a granny flat instead of a qualifying ADU. Does that mean that they didn't build a kitchen?
Yeah.
So they couldn't, okay.
And it's just because they didn't want to pay this.
So as soon as you put the kitchen in, whether you want to qualify it as an ADU or not, you have to pay the, the, the DIF fees, right?
We considered an ADU at the time you put the kitchen in it.
You know, I, I feel like I'm on board with, uh, maybe reducing the DIFs and maybe even saying if it's a, a low-income unit, we eliminate them. But I, I'm a little concerned about just not recognizing the fact that our citizens want nice parks. It's a huge priority for them. They want our traffic signals to be upgraded, they want our streets to work. Uh, they, they want all the things that, that these fees are intended to pay for. And, um, we really don't know what the future holds for these, uh, ADUs and how many could be built. And, um, you know, one of the things that you learn as a new councilman, or you get in, involved in land use and all this, you know, a lot of us look at San Marcos and we go, what did San Marcos do differently than Vista did? Uh, or what was done differently about Shadow Ridge versus, you know, the north half of the city? Well, uh, a lot of fees were applied, uh, things were much more expensive to build, and now we have a circumstance where other cities, other neighborhoods have infrastructure that far superior to older areas. And then we get into a conversation about equity and, you know, why doesn't my neighborhood have these things? Well, because your neighborhood wasn't taxed the same way. Uh, and as we evolved, as government evolved, we laid bigger and bigger fees to pay for these nice things that people love. Uh, and they, and they choose to buy in communities that have these things because they go, yeah, I like the parks here, I like the, the public facilities. So my question, or my thought would be, I would join you in saying, let's see a proposal to dramatically discount the DIF fees for ADUs and perhaps for ones that are qualifying as affordable, perhaps we want to go ahead and waive them altogether. But I just, and I know that the, you know, it's easy to say, well, let's just get rid of all the development impact fees, but then who pays for parks? And people really want parks. Like, they come in here and they tell us they really want parks, I really want parks. Uh, they make our city a better place to live. So I just don't, unless we have an alternative funding mechanism. And one of the problems for Vista particularly is, uh, we don't have a large, you know, we're, for, our neighbors, Escondido, San Marcos, well, San Marcos is a little smaller, but Carl's Bed and Oceanside, they're all twice the square mileage that we are. Uh, they all have much larger, uh, property tax bases, um, they all have much larger, uh, sales tax bases. We are really income challenged as a city because our average property values are much lower than some of our neighbors. And so for us to be able to keep up, and this is, our residents are constantly comparing our, as they should, they're comparing Vista to the city next door. And they're going, what's wrong with this city that we don't have the same quality and caliber of service as well? I mean, a lot of it goes back to the fact that, uh, you know, we were, you know, very forward-thinking 100 years ago and we brought water to Vista. And so we developed as a city, uh, you know, 50, 60 years earlier than our neighbors. And when we developed so much earlier, it was before these modern planning practices and we haven't necessarily chosen to implement those practices, uh, on a consistent basis on a go-forward we have in some master plan areas. So anyway, that's, that's my first bloods reaction is, I would entertain a proposal to move in the direction that you want to go. But what happens in 10 years from now if we see 1,000 or 2,000 of these permits get pulled? And we say, okay, we're really, you know, uh, we're really seeing a large increase in, in this type of housing unit. type of housing unit? That's my concern. These people are going to want services too. And I think, by the way, I'm addicted to the tiny house shows. Okay? Totally addicted. My wife wants nothing to do with it, but I always say, let's sell our house and get a tiny house. So I think it's a great idea. And I think a lot of the millennials want to live in a smaller house, have a smaller housing payment, but they especially want all the other stuff that comes with it. They want more of the amenities. They say, I'm not going to pay as much for my primary dwelling unit, but I want more of the amenities, right? So we're going to have to continue to provide those things to them. So those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Contreras.
To follow up on what Deputy Mayor Franklin was saying, yeah, it is a real concern, right? How are we going to fund more open space? Perhaps, you know, we need to have a separate discussion on reviewing the development impact fees that we have for everything outside of, you know, ADUs. And perhaps, you know, we can figure out the economics of that. And, you know, maybe it would be really helpful to see what the maximum amount of ADUs could be, right? I don't know if there's a way to do that. But if there's a way to kind of have an idea of how many, like, the potential of ADU creation in Vista, yeah, I mean, is that something that, does that make sense? Like, is that something that we're able to do so that way we can kind of get to, you know, the gist of what Deputy Mayor Franklin was saying? You know, what if down the pipeline, you know, we get a ton of them and now we have a lot more people that need to use these facilities? And then when we're looking at, you know, 24/7 fire season and that kind of stuff? So is that a possibility?
We can certainly give you maximum potential in terms of the number of zoned lots that could do it, based on their zoning and their lot size. But that would be way more than you'd ever really see. It would probably be worth looking at maybe what other cities in the region have done. You know, compare the ones that have waived fees, although that's happened recently, but at least get some numbers on averages so that we could maybe give you an estimate of what we think.
I think that'd be good.
It's not a super-high number based on my experience countywide. The changes a state made makes it much easier, but they've only been in place for a short time. So I think you'll see an increase over time, but we haven't seen it countywide yet.
I still would like to see, like, a maximum potential, even if it's like a ridiculous number, just because it really frames the conversation and it allows us to have a more comprehensive look at, you know, whether this makes sense. I still really support this because we have a housing crisis and there's no way around it except to build more. And, you know, in these lots where that can be accommodated, you know, I think a multi-generational family is a good thing. And, you know, I think the squeeze of the housing shortage has kind of moved a lot of people in that direction and they're finding a lot of benefits, you know, building community and whatnot. But, yeah, I would still like to see, like, the maximum potential, even if it's not like a hard number, if it's kind of, you know, this is around the air, the number of, you know, possible. And then take a look at some of our neighbors, if that's possible. I would love to see that.
I might also add that if the city council wants to go forward to this or explore it further, you might want to look at either a sunset provision, certain period of time, or you could look at a cap with reviewing it at that time as well.
Councilmember Green.
Okay, yeah, that was my question too, is perhaps we put a cap on it. We say, hey, the first 100 to apply are 50. You know what I mean? You could put a cap on it. You could put a timeframe on it. Just to speak to Deputy Mayor Franklin's, you know, point about the development impact fees and how we need this money for our parks and things like that. I got the numbers on the ADUs, that, hey, we've built 11 of them over two years and we've had 28 applications, 17 of which didn't go through. Over the last two years, how many units would you say we built in the city of Vista? Just guess.
Couple thousand, probably.
Couple thousand. And each one of those couple thousand paid these ADU fees, right? So in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, I don't think, and by the way, my little fuzzy thing fell off, so it pops. I don't know, I need a new one. But in my opinion, this isn't going ADD. I know. This isn't going to affect our bottom line. It's not going to allow us not to make the park for the people. And, yeah, you are going to have some college kids that rent these out, but a lot of these are going to be used for extended families. A lot of these are going to be used for mother-in-laws and father-in-laws and grandmas and grandpas. And, you know, like I say, I like the stipulation of if we make them affordable, we'll waive all of them. If it's not going to be affordable, maybe we discount them a little bit to incentivize them. But at least we can get some more units under our belt. So I wanted to throw that out there. 2,000 units have paid about 14 grand each over the last two years. We have a good amount of money in our parks and traffic budget and things from all those units. Great job, by the way, council. Keep it up.
Deputy Mayor.
I like the idea of putting a cap in. I would leave it to staff to suggest whether that's a length of time or a number of units or maybe both, whichever comes sooner. And I think I would, along with that, I think I would not exempt a second ADU. So if you build the first one, you get exempted. I wouldn't, if you want to build a third unit on your parcel...
You can only build one ADU on a single-family lot.
What if I have a two-acre, single-family lot? Still can only?
Still one. Or you can subdivide your property if you want to create another lot.
Okay, all right. So disregard that. And, I mean, what do you think for conversation if we're going to, and I really am anxious to hear from our other colleagues on this, but as a proposal, what about a 50% discount on the diff fees and then 100% discount for affordable?
Good. I like it. I like it.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Your presentation begs a lot of questions. And your 36-page report here had links to 18 articles, none of which I was able to read during your presentation. There was nothing in here for us to really look at and digest, but I appreciate you bringing this up. I have a lot of concerns with accessible dwelling units. One of them is, we've already talked about ad nauseam forever about traffic and congestion. And I understand, and I appreciate that you're talking about putting a cap on it. So I appreciate that. So perhaps it wouldn't have a great impact on that. Also increasing density, not by much, if you're just splitting, you know, a lot in two and you're adding a second one. I've seen this work in some communities. I've seen it not work very well in more communities. Yes, it might be for grandma, it might be for Uncle Bob, but grandma and Uncle Bob, 10, 20 years from now, they might not be there anymore and you're going to be renting it out. And we're already seeing situations throughout our community where apartments are being lived in by two or three separate families, sharing an apartment. That's happening in single-family homes right now. I know in my neighborhood, we have 67 homes in my neighborhood and we probably have about 83 different families living there. We have one house in my neighborhood has three separate families living in it. So I think you have to look at all of the impact that it has. And as far as impact fees, these are families and these are people who are going to be driving on our roads. They are going to be wanting the amenities. So I would be really hesitant to reduce by too much the impact fees because you're still going to have the impact on our community. And so I wouldn't want to eliminate it completely. But what I think I heard you say, Mr. Conley, was looking at this sheet that Mr. Green prepared. And I think the deputy mayor asked the question regarding apartments. And I think you said for apartments, for multifamily dwellings, which, you know, the apartment buildings, they're charged by unit. And it's, I think, did you say it was 7,000 per unit or 6,500 per unit?
It's a slightly lower fee. It's around 6,500 per unit for the park fee.
For the, right, right. I understood that. And so here on his paper that he gave, it said the park fee would be 75, 22, 51. So that discrepancy bothers me. I don't know why we would want to charge an ADU more than we would charge an apartment. So things like that, I would absolutely want to align those. I wouldn't want to be charging an ADU more than we're charging an apartment. What was the purpose for that discrepancy?
We adjusted our fees, the park fee, actually, well, I should clarify. We adopted the park fee before the second unit provisions were required by the state. And so we never went back and adjusted for ADUs. We just charged them as if they were single-family homes. So the adjustment's not been made. When we adjusted our ADU requirements for the state requirements last year, we never revisited the fees. It was just a change to the zoning requirements that were required by the state.
Okay. I'm not opposed to having an in-depth conversation about this with a lot of these questions answered and with a lot more information provided. I'm just not, I wouldn't be in favor of eliminating the fees completely because they still will have an impact on our community and somebody still has to pay for the impact that they'll have. But I don't want to leave the conversation by pointing out that a lot of the problems that we have with affordable housing in the state of California is directly attributable to the state legislature. When you have new homes being built and almost 50% of the price of that goes to fees and regulations that the state charges, not labor, not materials, not the local permitting process. I really wish that somebody along the way would have that conversation, that would have an honest conversation about all the causes that we have for this problem, instead of allowing the state to kick the can down the road to the city level, making the problem ours when they created it or they did a great deal of it to create this problem. And I appreciate that we, as a city, want to try to do our part to alleviate it. And I appreciate that you brought this up and I'm okay to have the conversation. I'm just not sure where I'm at on this. I'm not quite convinced yet, but I will have the conversation. Meanwhile, I still keep trying to get California to pay attention. Point Loma Nazarene University did a study a couple of years ago. So many other places have done additional studies to talk about exactly where the high cost of housing in California comes from, what's causing it, not just talking about, oh, we have this problem, let's fix it. Let's look at the causes of it. So if you're a policy wonk like I am and you want a good read before bed, go on Point Loma Nazarene University website, download it and read it. Maybe not before you go to bed if you want to go to sleep because it'll probably piss you off. I mean, it's not, anyway. Sorry. Thank you.
We have two speakers.
Real quick, I just wanted to say something to Councilwoman Rigby. I apologize. I just want to make sure, you know, I didn't expect us to make a decision. It's so much information. I took so much time reviewing all this. I clicked on all those links and I knew you guys would all want to click on the links and get all the information as well. I just wanted you to see, hey, this is kind of how I summed it up. I didn't get in the weeds too much. We didn't even talk about our size restrictions in the city of Vista on what the size of an ADU is allowed to be on a particular square footage. All that stuff, I'm hoping staff will come back at and allow us to review together. I just wanted to say, hey, is it something we could look at together? So I appreciate you being willing to have the conversation and we'll definitely dig in a lot deeper between now and the decision time. Thank you.
As long as all you jumped in before these, I'll just jump in real quickly. And my concerns were density in neighborhoods that weren't built for the density and parking. And there's already parking problems in all the old neighborhoods. Like Shadow Ridge, you don't have to worry because none will be built over there. So it's all on this side of the side. And so, and I worry about, you know, the traffic, additional traffic. And I can see, it's not going to be just granny that lives there, which would be me. I have grandkids who live with me. So, you know, that's how it goes. So I think it would be more than one person and then more cars probably, you know. So that would be my concern. But I'm willing to have the conversation. The park fees also bother me. It seems like people in apartments would use the parks more than the people in single-family residences. So I would, I can't figure out, they're lower and this is higher. So that bothers me. So I'm willing to look at those things and maybe have a lower thing. I don't know that I want to totally give up all the fees because I think people will use the parks. I think the fire protection, the density will cause more, you know, fire protection and looking at things. So I looked at that. And the street signals and the traffic, I think that's, those fees, I think that's, people will be driving and so it's going to put more impact on those things. So I think that they should pay those fees. Maybe, we just have to look at the whole thing, I think. And then, and I'm willing to do that. So let's bring it back and do that. And with that, I will go to the speakers. So Kat Alexander and I'll be followed by Sharon McDonald.
Good evening, members of sitting council. I wanted to thank all of you for putting accessory dwelling units on the agenda today. And a special thanks to Councilmember Green for your great presentation. Really appreciate that. I spent the first 18 years of my life here in Vista and I now own my childhood home, which is just south of Shadow Ridge on an acre here in Vista. And as a homeowner, both a homeowner and a professional in public health with over 15 years of experience, I strongly recommend that you all make it easier for us homeowners to build ADUs. I want to build my ADU for my mom, Elizabeth. She's 76. She has bipolar disorder and she raised me as a single mom here in, on welfare here in Vista. I want to take care of her the same way that she took care of me, hopefully a little bit better. She now lives in a senior community, but I would like to have her next to me. I can't because, one, my home has stairs and she's a very high fall risk. Number two, my home is not wheelchair or walker accessible. She now uses a wheelchair. I imagine in the future she would use a walker. And number three, I love my mother, but I do not want to share a kitchen with her. Building a wheelchair accessible, I was hoping that would get a good laugh. It's all been very serious tonight. Building a wheelchair-accessible ADU would actually allow my mom to be near me and which would be good for her to be around family, both for her physical health and her mental health. And if and when the time came when she would need assisted living, I could rent that unit out and use that money to pay for care, which we know is extremely expensive. So I have two recommendations. Moving forward as you review all this, number one, I highly recommend that you reduce the developmental impact fees, as not only Councilmember Green recommended, but the state of California very highly recommended in their, oh, gosh, 76-page PDF, which I read the whole thing they released in 2006. It's their ADU memorandum. That was a very strong recommendation. And number two, I really recommend that you consider increasing the total square footage to 1,200 square feet for R1 and potentially additional zones. On my property now, the limit is 800 square feet. In order to build a two-bedroom wheelchair-accessible home for my mom, it's very difficult. 1,000 feet would be fantastic, but I recommend 1,200 square feet. And making ADUs easier to build for homeowners would be a tremendous benefit for our residents. Number one, we can increase affordable housing. Number two, we can increase green housing. Three, it's extra income for homeowners, increasing property values, supporting the local economy through construction as well as ongoing property taxes. We increase our usable space so allowing...
I need you to wrap up. You have three minutes left.
Okay. Allowing, okay, it increases a greater sense of community. And finally, it creates infill, reducing building on those parks and those open spaces. And so, thank you so much.
Thank you. Sharon McDonald?
And she was very well-spoken. So I just wanted to say, I really do agree with everything you've said. And thank you for the presentation and thanks for all your comments. And I think, I might just reiterate really what was said, but I think it's really important. Actually, I know that eventually, in the near future, I'm going to be moving my parents into an accessory unit, hopefully. You know, they're not doing the stairs so well. A fall will always change something. And so you think, I want them close, but I also don't want them in my kitchen and I don't want them in the hallway, you know? And so I don't want to share a bathroom. So I would love to have them feel independent too and have their own space, but be close enough that I can still, you know, check on them or if they need care, I know that it is more affordable to have someone part-time than full-time while they're remote. And, you know, to second this, I have a friend who just found out her mom has Alzheimer's. Same situation. She's trying to find a way to actually utilize a part of her house, kind of make like a mother-in-law suite, but $15,000 to $25,000 to make an addition on already a very costly medical expense that she's taking on to take care of her mom, I just think is really prohibitive. And when I look at those numbers and I see, okay, 17 maybe applications weren't fulfilled, even if they were at $5,000, that's $85,000. So it's better to have 50% or a third of something than a zero of 100%, right? 100% of nothing. So I think to put it in perspective, I think $5,000 or something near there would be a hurdle most people would be willing to take, especially when there's other expenses beyond just the improvements. When I talk to a contractor, just even look at it, you know, a true second dwelling unit is going to cost somewhere between $40,000 and $60,000. You know, a lock-off on a bedroom, I was trying to think of creating with a bathroom, is still going to cost about $15,000 to $20,000. And then to add the kitchen or a gas line, you know, it all adds up. living in a house, you probably already have the parking issue. So, at least this way, it's going to be documented and the tenants would be screened if you do rent it out versus use it for family. And I have a friend who's now a single mom who would love to rent out a unit so she can stay in her house because she's now a single mom, before she was married, and she doesn't have the income, but now she's going to be forced to move. And it would be nice for her to utilize a space like that. So, I hear these scenarios a lot through family and friends, but I think it's really important. And I know for a fact that I think Carlsbad or Encinitas is now fast-tracking these. So, it is something that has been done well somewhere and maybe if we do it well the way they have, you know, we'll avoid some of those issues that they've run into or the ones that aren't doing it well. So, I know Carlsbad does it really well and they do a low-income housing section, kind of. I've been doing my homework on it because, you know, if I can't do it here, I'm going to do it somewhere else. So, you know, I hope you really do consider it. I think it's good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Well, I appreciate the two speakers very much. That certainly was very informative and food for thought. And while you were speaking, I was thinking if it's for a parent who's retired, the idea of making it a low-income restricted unit for some period of time probably is a no-brainer because you're either not charging rent or you're charging a low amount of rent based on their fixed income. So, that probably would be an easy hurdle. So, for anybody that wanted to build an ADU for a family member who's retired, for granny or grandpa, it seems like the low income might be a route that they could go. It achieves a purpose for us to fill our low-income RENA numbers. So, I'm okay with the idea of waiving completely for the, for the low income. And then I had another thought. Let me see if I can recall it. I'll cut back.
And I have a speaker, so maybe you'll think of it while the speaker speaks. How was that? So, Alan Sweeten.
Good evening, everyone. I've never done this ever before in my life.
Don't be nervous, it's quite all right.
Thank you, Councilman Green. I enjoyed your presentation and eliminated 99.9% of what I was going to say. I do, I too have a mother-in-law who I will be trying to take responsibility for and that's what I'm looking for these times. I'm in the beginning stages of looking into this and I thought it'd come today, but I also would strongly recommend that you reduce or eliminate the fees. I would love for you to pay me to do this. That would be great. Because that would be amazing. But I would, a couple of suggestions outside of what everyone's basically said is to not, not put a number constraint, but a time constraint like San Diego did, five years, because I could see potential, you know, flippers or people coming in and gobbling up all those spots where I'm a homeowner with kids and it takes me forever to get stuff done, as we all know with children. A couple of comments, I actually don't go to Vista Parks. Unfortunately, I don't. I care more about the schools. So, as far as development or fees, I would rather pay for improved schools than parks, honestly. But yeah, other than that, I would, you know, as far as the distinction, I'm not quite clear versus second unit versus granny as ADU with the addition of a kitchen. I just, I see people putting in these ADUs and not paying the additional fees and then going in and doing it anyways. What's the point? Why not start it and eliminate those fees so I can put in a kitchen because I don't want my mother-in-law in my kitchen either? So, I just really don't understand the distinction there. As far as parking, I would, I would love to have more parking on my streets because my, my street is a freeway and having more cars on the streets would probably slow people down. That's, that's kind of my take. But yeah, that's all I have and I appreciate you guys talking about this and even considering the reduction. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Back to Deputy Mayor, did you think what you were going to say?
It was the thought that was presented about increasing the square footage. If you have a full acre of land, I would not be opposed to building a larger than 800-square-foot unit, but that's something I'd like to hear a recommendation from staff on, but I think I could be amenable to, to looking at that as well. The other thing that occurred to me with regard to the actual fee for our time in reviewing the plans, I know we had talked about Encinitas has some pre-approved plans and I don't know what the cost to us to buy or license those plans, but maybe it's cheaper to let people license a plan from an architect. Let's say we found five designs and they have to pay an architect a fee to license that, but it's pre-approved. So, instead of paying $3,700 in staff time, they license a pre-approved plan and, you know, it costs them $700. So, maybe it saves them another $3,000. Can we look at that?
We can sure evaluate that, sure.
Or maybe we buy the plan and we have the license, so the ability to sell it. There's got to be some way to accomplish that. I mean, I want to recover the cost of purchasing those plans because somebody's got to build those plans.
So, Encinitas did that. They have approved plans.
But they only have one structure, right?
They have, I think, maybe two plans. Oh, so there's more than one.
Let's take a look and have that discussion.
We can evaluate that.
They could bring it back to us.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Rigby?
I know that it will surely be on your mind, but I want to articulate it when we come back and have this discussion. This all stems from trying to meet our RENA numbers and affordable housing. And we talk a lot about, you know, mom and dad or Uncle Bob or grandma, but eventually it is going to be a rented unit. It's going to change ownership, change residents. But I want to know, what is the oversight and how do we monitor whether one is going to be an affordable housing unit versus a rental unit? And I anticipate a lot of these are going to end up being rental units, just because we've seen the history of that happen. So, I, would you come back with, with, you know, when this comes back before us, I would just like some information on how do we document that? How do we monitor it? What's the length of time, et cetera? And how are we going to prove up our RENA numbers if we don't know how much Bob is renting his 800-square-foot shack for?
Councilwoman, we can, we can get into that when we bring it back, but just so you know, our Housing Division would oversee the deed-restricted units from implementation then like an annual evaluation on them as well.
Is that it, everybody? Everybody? John, do you have enough direction?
Yes, thank you. I'll bring back a more formal report and we can get some final decisions made and then I'll have to bring back a formal amendment through the Planning Commission. So, revisit it twice before we're done.
Okay. That sounds good. So, where are we? So, now we are on to our remarks, right? Oral communications, oral communications. Each speaker is given three minutes to speak on matters on the, that are not on the agenda. As a reminder, the City Council is prohibited from discussing an item that is not on the agenda or from answering questions posed by speakers. And our first speaker is Frank DeFalco. Okay, and he's followed by Kathleen Boyle, followed by Rebecca Medici.
Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, thank you for your time today. Longtime Vista resident, first time in the chamber. Cool place, I like it. Federal government made CBD oil legal in all 50 states to purchase. I got the idea when I went into Fraser Farms and saw that they were selling CBD product. Presenters of a check today also have CBD in their soap that they sell. In early September, I came to this building to try to pull a license, to offer, open a website and sell CBD products nationwide. No product in the city, no product in my house, just a website. I was denied and turned over to the city attorney. Rafi, who has helped me tremendously, has done as much as he could, but I'm not getting answers as to why they will not issue my license. So, I'd just like this council to look into it and see why two individuals in this city can do it and why I cannot. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen Boyle?
Hi, good evening. I'm going to try to time myself also. This is about our climate crisis and I know that Vista's working on a climate action plan and that is good and moving forward. We also need, I think, to move in many directions at the same time because the climate crisis is so, has so many factors on so many levels, it's very complex. I looked at the, there's a site on the City of Santa Monica where I lived before I moved down here and they have an Office of Sustainability and the Environment and I invite you to look at their website. They have many programs from every different angle that you can think of, things I never thought of, in a very well-presented way, very graphically kind of poppy and very friendly. You can look at it, complex information and you're attracted to it, you understand it. They have many programs, as I said. For example, for energy, they have gone with something similar to Community Choice Energy and it's starting now. They've been working on it for years apparently, but it's coming online this month, this year. Theirs is called CPA, Clean Power Alliance, very, looks very much at a, I just looked quickly, like our Community Choice Energy where they're buying renewable, clean energy and other and it's being distributed by their utility, which I think for them is Southern California Edison. So, it's very, very similar. But they have a lot of other programs and some of them are the kind of fun. They have rebates and some of these rebates, the funding comes from a variety of sources, some is state, some is water management district, but they're giving rebates for things like cash for grass, which is not what we're going through right now in Vista. It's not a 60s thing, but if you do away with your lawn, they'll give you a rebate per square foot for putting in a sustain, a low-water-involved landscape. And they also have landscapers who'll come out for $50 for two hours, which is pretty good if you've ever looked up landscapers. And also you can go on tours of model gardens and get ideas. They have rebates for, oh, and when you do that landscaping, you get a little acute sign and it says, "We love," with the heart, "We love Santa Monica. Save water, show your love." And I think this is an important part because it puts that kind of civic pride and a kind of an identity, like, "I'm a water saver, I'm a Santa Monicaan who loves my water." So, I think it gives you, it's not just like, "Oh, I'm going to do this because I have to." I think it makes it, turns it into a good thing. They also have rebates for rain barrel rebates. So, you put in a rain barrel, capture that water. Permeable driveway rebate, downspout rebate. So, there's a lot of things they're doing that can help our overall climate.
I need you to wrap up.
They also have a guide for purchasing decisions and next time I'll talk about trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Medici?
Good evening, Council. I just want to draw your attention to the fact that the San Diego County Board of Supervisors voted to develop Community Choice Energy program today and they say that it will lower costs for ratepayers and cut greenhouse gases. And there are, they are operating in 19 cities in California or there are 8 million Californians who are now using Community Choice Energy. And the City of San Diego was also involved in this and I just think that this is a good time for you guys to jump on the bandwagon. It's, you know, the county is involved and I'd like to think, like John Conley does a lot, but it would be great if we had some person specifically hired for staff to help with the cap and to investigate the Community Choice Energy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peter Milnes?
Greetings, Mayor.
Talk right in the microphone, bring it up there. There you go. Thank you.
Greetings, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is an incident that occurred at Vista High School. After Jonathan Milnes' first arrest, I spoke to Police Officer Spencer about John's attention deficit hyperactivity disability. And to be aware of it, I thought he was a little rough with Jonathan by throwing him to the ground and pepper spraying him. I left it at that. On his second arrest, he arrested by Police Officer Spencer. Officer Spencer brought Jonathan into his room, closed the door of his office and smashed his head against the wall, making him dizzy and lightheaded. At first, I didn't know about these injuries or that he was arrested or taken to Kearney Mesa Juvenile Hall. My ex-wife didn't notify me of the arrest, so I wonder why. I found out by a friend of his arrest, so I scheduled a visit at Juvenile Hall. I proceeded in to visit John. The guards, the guards, sorry, were very professional and considerate. A guard brought Jonathan to me, that's when I noticed his injuries to his forehead and his black eye. The bump between his hairline and his eyebrow was three inches in denoumer and raised one inch outward. I was horrified when I saw Jonathan. I asked what happened and the details, of course, are in the paragraph above. He was diagnosed by Dr. Garg, very young age, around five of his disability and it's in his records. He was on IEP 504 plan for his disability, but taken out in fifth grade, which I wasn't notified by my ex or the school. I feel that Officer Spencer used excessive force against my disabled son, Jonathan P. Milnes, behind closed doors. At the jail, I went to the desk sergeant and asked for my son to have pictures taken of his injury and seen by a physician. After I left Juvenile Hall, I called the public defender, Stacy Schreiner, who asked to make sure pictures of the injuries were taken. Were taken and seen by a doctor. I emailed them also and found out later that no pictures were ever taken. I served in the US Army for six years at a Finsimmons Army Medical Center, Fort Riley, Kansas, and in a MASH unit. And then later here in San Diego in the 349th evac hospital, San Diego, with honor and deep, deep patriotism for my country, sorry. I worked at Tri-City and Scripps Encinitas Hospital for over 20 years, serving this great community. I have the utmost respect for police officers. I was a police explorer in Houghton in high school, doing ride-alongs, watching how radar works, learning CPR. It was a great experience. I was at New Venture Christian Fellowship when Pastor Sean did the Tony Willie Zepatelli's eulogy and cried for his wife and children's loss in 2003. And of course, he was a Navy veteran like me, or I was Army, he was Navy, I apologize. And sincerely, Peter D. Milnes, US veteran, Army veteran. I guess my biggest thing is if maybe officers were given training on how to deal with disabled children. And I don't, he seemed to be very frustrated. He's not there anymore. He's doing duties in other sections. But even the hospitals, we, every year we do training on kids, different ages, disabled, how to deal with difficult patients, things like that.
I need you to finish.
But basically, I just kind of want you to look into it. And I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
With that, that's the end of our oral communications. And so, with that, we will go to remarks and I'll start at the other end with Councilmember Contreras.
Okay, so, hopefully you all can come to my town hall. It is coming up, it's March 6th, at the Linda Road Center, if you're not sure where that's at, but you know where Vapa's at. It's in Vapa, basically. Okay, so it looks like a giant, brand-new gym. Doors open at 6:00 PM. Programming starts promptly at 6:30. There will be a Spanish interpreter on site, so if you can make it, great. If you can't, you know, hopefully you can make one of the other ones. I'm going to have Town Hall quarterly, but please let everybody know. And also, I am very honored to say that on March 4th, I'm heading up to Sacramento and I will be honored as Woman of the Year for our Assembly District 76 by Assembly Member Tasha Berner Horvath. So, I'm really excited to go up and then I'll be coming right back because I need to get to my Town Hall. So, please, please come see me at my Town Hall. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Green?
First of all, congratulations. I'm sitting next to the Woman of the Year. Crazy. Also, I just want to thank everybody for showing up. I want to thank everybody for speaking tonight. We encourage you guys to come. We listen and we do make changes based off of what you say. So, your words really do matter. If you have comments, please show up, please speak. I know sometimes it's nerve-wracking, but you get through it. We love that you speak and we'll definitely be looking into things that you ask about. The other thing I want to make sure you know is in Vista, it is now... Also, I just want to thank everybody for showing up. I want to thank everybody for speaking tonight. We encourage you guys to come. We listen, and we do make changes based off of what you say. So your words really do matter. If you have comments, please show up, please speak. I know sometimes it's nerve-wracking, but you get through it. We love that you speak, and we'll definitely be looking into things that you ask about. The other thing I want to make sure you know is, in Vista, it is now Read Across America Week. We're celebrating Dr. Seuss's 115th birthday. What that means is, as councilmembers, we're going to be going to different schools, reading books to kids, and they also, all of these elementary schools throughout the community are looking for reading volunteers. So if any of you guys love to read, I always say, readers are leaders, and leaders are learners. So if you guys have some free time, you want to show up at an elementary school and read, I'm hitting about five this week and a couple next week as well. It's something that I love to do, is hang out with kids and let them know the importance of reading and staying educated. So yesterday also, I want to make sure you know, was Lake Dolphin Read Day in the city of Vista. So if you read yesterday, you were honoring those lake dolphins, which are part of Vista Unified School District. Thank you guys so much for your time, really appreciate it. And thank my councilmembers for the discussion tonight. I really appreciate your open mind and your comments.
Deputy Mayor?
I also want to thank all the members of the community who came forward to speak this evening, to bring important issues to our attention. A lot of good things that we need to look into, and things we need to discuss, and policies we need to change. Thank you, Councilman Green, for your extremely thorough presentation. It was very well-thought-out. And I would just say, not as a direct response, but Councilman Green, you'll be particularly surprised to hear this, but when you and I were at the grand opening of the Caton Craft, I had my very first dose of CBD when I drank one of their sodas, and realized later that it had CBD in it. So though I am not, and have never been a consumer of marijuana products, I have now consumed CBD, and I'm, I can report to you that I did not have a psychoactive reaction to the product. I expected it to feel slightly funny, but did not. And my, my mother-in-law gives CBD to the dogs, because she says it helps her joints. So anyway, this is a little entertainment for you, but, you know, we can all evolve, Joe. We can all evolve.
Okay, okay.
As always, I want to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight to talk to us, and to everybody that we heard through email or phone calls about tonight's agenda. I appreciate that you're all still here at the end of the meeting. That doesn't always happen, so thank you for being here. Thank you for your participation. Staff, always, thank you very much. I know sometimes the conversations get a little heated, or conversation goes on. I always appreciate everything that you do, not only just for us, but for our community, so thank you for that. I always look forward to Read Across America. I love going out and reading with the little kids, and I even put on the little hats that they give me to wear, or that Joe makes me wear. And if you want to join us, they have lots of Dr. Seuss paraphernalia over at Party City. So if you want to dress the part as well, you can pick your favorite character. So anyway, that's always a lot of fun to do, and it's for a good cause, and the little kids really do appreciate it. They get so excited when we come in. So other than that, it's just meetings, meetings, meetings. So I'll be seeing you next week at Sandag.
You'll see me tomorrow morning at Encina.
At Encina, yes. We'll be doing that as well.
Okay, well, and I appreciate everybody that stayed and came, and all of your comments also, and our staff. We have a great staff back there, and they stick it out, too, so appreciate that. So I have, I have comments here. So there's still time to take the survey, and there are three different options that are being proposed for the downtown public space, the gazebo on the corner of Main Street and South Indiana. And so, more information, and there's a link to the survey online at thecityofvista.com. So go, go online and give us your opinions on what you think, you know, which, which one. There's three different options that you can choose from, which one you think would be the best thing for that, that corner. Get free help with your taxes. Actually, I did my taxes. I don't need free help. I gave, I turned over the accountant, actually, but I got it together. So get free help with your taxes from ARP volunteers at the McClellan Senior Center through April 15th. You can contact the center at 760-643-5290. That's 760-643-5290 to make an appointment, or walk-ins are available on Mondays, oh, Mondays, Thursdays, and Fridays, between 9:00 and 2:00. So find out more online at thecityofvista.com about that. Registration for the spring adult softball season is underway. Games are played March through June, and information is online at vista recreation.com. And one more thing, the McClellan Senior Center's Culture Caravan has a lot of fun day trips planned for March, including a tour of the historic Union Station in Los Angeles, and opening day of the San Diego Padres. So trip information is online at cityofvista.com. And that is all of my announcements, and I'll turn it over to our city manager and see what he's got.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know, there will be no coaster or Amtrak service in the next two weekends, which is March 2nd and 3rd, and March 9th and 10th, due to maintenance. So if you're interested in the schedules, please check online at nctd.org. Sandag Cruise will begin work next month on North Drive, one of the connections for the inland rail trail, the northern connection for us, or eastern connection, western connection, excuse me. Construction will last about six months, so likely into September, October, and take place Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 5:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And I want to let everybody know that the council meeting was actually broadcast live tonight on the internet. We've had some, we've had a couple meetings where we've had some glitches with the system, but it actually went out live tonight, so hopefully you won't hear from your constituents tomorrow. And then last, I want to say thank you to our Finance Director, Lauren Warham, who is leaving us, and Lauren's in the back there, but I want to say thank you to her. Lauren has worked for the city for almost four years, and she is heading off to the county to be the deputy, Chief Deputy Treasurer and Tax Collector. So it's a great move for Lauren. She's done a fantastic job working for the city, redefining a lot of our processes and making us more efficient. She's just, she's been a very dedicated employee, so I want to say thank you to Lauren. Wish her well in the county, and now we have another friend at the county that hopefully we can rely on in the future. So good luck, Lauren. And that's all I have.
Okay. How about down here? City Attorney?
Nothing this even. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, how about City Clerk? Kathy or Claire? Nope. Okay, with that, we are adjourned at 8:07.